Twenty seventh, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, please.
Counselor Comito.
Present.
Counselor Hayden.
Present.
Counselor DiMediris.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Paul.
Present.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Janik is absent.
All right, consent agenda. We have a couple of items here. So approval of town council minutes, January sixth, twenty twenty five, special meeting, January sixth, twenty twenty five, executive session, January thirteenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting, January thirteenth, twenty twenty five, exec, January fourteenth, twenty twenty five, special meeting, acknowledge receipts of minutes from boards and commissions and committees, personnel board four, acknowledge receipt of reports, treasurer Saret, December twenty twenty four, budget and revenue reports, planning board annual report twenty twenty four, school department year-to-date budget versus actual report, December twenty twenty four. Acknowledge receipt of correspondence, letter from Lucy D. Gaspar regarding questioning Bally's Hotel Tiverton enclosure and tax implications. Approval of tax assessor abatements, four thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars and sixteen cents. Approve funding to advertise the Budget Committee Open Position. Approval of police department budget transfers, five thousand five hundred forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents from account thirty-three thirty fifty-one oh one, personnel to account thirty-three thirty fifty-one eighty-one, summer patrols, seventy-five hundred dollars from account thirty-three thirty seventy-five ninety I T slash computers to account thirty-three thirty sixty-seven thirty-five software, hundred and thirty, a hundred and sixty-three dollars from account thirty-three thirty seventy-five ninety I T comp to account thirty-three thirty sixty-nine thirty-five Oshene Fiber. And then finally, draft town's multi-hazard mitigation plan for public review and comment. Would any counselors like to remove any items?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, motions are made in second and all in favor. Thank you. Okay, next up is public comment. We have two. First up is Mike Burke, item eight A, North Tiverton Appointments. Your preference. It's gonna be a while, so if you wanna say it now, by all means. If not, you're welcome to hang out.
I'm willing to hang out for a while.
And just because we do have a packed agenda, if we can keep it under three minutes, it'd be great. Thank you, sir.
Much, much under three. So thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Before you tonight, you have two names for appointment to the North Tiverton and revitalization and industrial park development committee. We have one opening that was created previously by resignation. Then you will have another opening coming up on your next agenda. There was a little bit of communication. Brian Goff had to step aside as well. So you have Paul Amaral and Adam Raposa before you tonight. I strongly recommend both of them. Adam could not be here because he's ill. Paul, if you know Paul, he has a wealth of knowledge and history of Tiverton and especially that section of Tiverton because he grew up there, and he'll bring a lot to the committee. And Adam, and Adam and I have had our disagreements in the past. I think folks know, but Adam has really stepped up. He came to two of our outreach meetings and really had really good input and has a lot of passion and excitement for this. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next up is Jamie French regarding rezoning. And same ask, if you could keep it under three, that'd be great.
I'll try.
Thank you.
Hi, I forgot my glasses, so I'm gonna be trying to read this. I, I don't understand how we can be rezoning because we haven't followed Rhode Island forty, uh, general law, forty-five dash twenty-two point two dash thirteen, which is, which is the Comprehensive Planning and Land Use Act. It states that the municipality is responsible for the administration and enforcement of the plan, which is the comprehensive plan. It says that all municipal land use decisions, which is zoning, shall be in conformance with the locally adopted municipal comprehensive plan. So that means that we have to have meetings of the comprehensive plan, and we get public input, and we have public hearings, and then the town council decides to adopt the new updated comprehensive plan. That plan then goes to the state. After the state adopts that plan, then we come back and rewrite zoning. So I don't understand how we're doing all of this rezoning when we haven't done the first part, which is Rhode Island general law. We have not updated or adapted our comprehensive plan, nor did we do it for R one twenty. We, we have never done it. What we do is we, we change the zoning and then come in front of you for a fast, oh, look, here's a future land use map. We'll approve that and consider that. And that's not, that's not the way the law works. So we've had, we've had since spring of twenty thirteen, uh, twenty twenty-three to, to fi, to do the legislative actions, which is special use permits to add ADUs and cannabis to our zoning. We've had, spent a couple hundred thousand dollars. We've had two extensions, and we have yet to do that. Instead, we've intertwined it into this new waterfront zone, and, and we have, and, and we haven't done what we were supposed to do, which is conform to the special use permits. I don't understand the, the, the whole thing about the waterfront zone is so confusing because it says in our comprehensive plan that we are supposed to, um, we're supposed to, we're supposed to have respect for, for the waterfront. There's a section for the marine use. And we have a plan, tiverton.gov shows our plan for the Mount Hope Bay watershed buffer, which is the Mount Hope Bay area that we want to industrialize. It says very clearly in that D E M plan, that is part of, of our Tiverton plan, that we are supposed to have, that is a low-impact development area. Now, this should be added to our zoning because our zoning states very clearly that we're supposed to be following and having, have respect for our watershed buffers. Yet we don't add this, we're not adding this into our watershed buffer by, it was just rezoning, nor are we.
If you wouldn't mind, Ms. French, just wrapping up because we're, we're already a minute over.
Okay, so, so my question is, how do we, how do we approve the special use permits without passing the waterfront zone and stay within Rhode Island general law?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a new section for presentation. This is for our state delegation. So I'd like to invite Representatives Edwards and McGaw and Senator Philag to come forward. This is for us to ask some questions or, you know, propose some suggestions for what we'd like to see from the General Assembly this session, because it's important for us to all work together. Obviously, this won't be the last time we meet and discuss. I happen to know one of them pretty well. So with that, we did, to make this easier, you know, threw some bullet points in there for items that we are looking potentially to, to have addressed from the state level. So.
Excuse me, if I can interrupt.
Yes, sir.
Just one second. We'd like to give a, let's say, grant to our.
You know, Senator Philag cannot come here.
No, I know.
Without a check.
I was thinking, what is.
You'd allow me in Tiverton unless I bring money.
Senator, you're welcome anytime. Keep the checks flowing.
This is for our training apparatus that they're gonna be utilizing in Tiverton, so.
I thought you were gonna object to what we're doing.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Senator.
Proceed, sorry.
No worries. I know, I know our, our General Assembly members have a caucus meeting this evening, so we'll try and keep it quick. So we put together a number of items. I can run through the list real quickly. This is based on feedback from some of the other counselors, but, you know, something to address the ability for the town to regulate short-term rentals. I know that there was legislation proposed in the last session, didn't end up moving forward, so perhaps there's something we can do there. The second one would be looking at our water districts. Now, unlike Aquinic Island, we have two water districts serving a significantly smaller, you know, portion of people versus Newport Water Authority. So we'd like to look at ways to, you know, find some efficiencies there. Homestead exemptions were another one that were, that was brought up by Counselor Perry initially, and this dovetails into some additional items, you know, looking at potentially taxing by class different segments of our housing population. Statewide transportation, I know Representative McGaw is on that, that committee. One of our counselors who's not here, Counselor Janik asked for an update on the Sepauid oyster farm and that legislation where things stand with C R M C. And we'll skip the enabling legislation because that kind of falls broadly under the homestead piece. The statewide school transportation formula as well, Counselor Janik wanted to address. And then if there are any opportunities for state grants, our interim administrator, I know, is the Grant King, but he might be missing some. So that's our quick list. I don't know if any counselors had anything else to add.
Yeah, also, I would like you to reach out to the planning board because of the new zoning regulations and everything that's going on. And I think they have some that they would like to talk to you about.
They have questions. They'd be better off morning them through you or through your town administrator.
Yeah, because I really think that that's a whole nother issue, too, the new zoning regulations and how that's affecting every town in the state.
Just run them through the administrator to us.
And then, perfect.
That'd be perfect.
Thank you, Jay.
That way, there's no, nothing, nothing lost in interpretation.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
The short-term rentals, Michelle and I know that Lauren Carson has been working on that. We have both reached out to her and talked to her about that legislation. It hasn't been finalized on the House side. I don't believe there's a companion yet on the Senate, so that is.
Can I just add, the commission, so there's a short-term rental commission that is still meeting, and so they have not come up with a final report on, to propose legislation. So that's all pending the completion of the commission.
Okay, so it's fair to say we should probably wait until the commission's completed before we see anything. Okay.
Yeah, I talked to Speaker about it, and he definitely told, told me to wait until the commission was done and waited to see what Lauren Carson came up with. On the water districts, I have looked at this already, and it's not clean-cut. It's not something that happens very often, but it has been done in the state of Rhode Island, most notably Coventry. So, and it was fairly recent. So we're gonna look at what they're doing in Coventry. Your homestead exemptions, that's up to your solicitor to give us legislation.
There is legislation that's being submitted that would sort of, it's enabling legislation to open it up for municipalities to, to do more with homestead exemptions. I don't know where that legislation's gonna go, but just so you know that that is under discussion.
Okay.
Right, right now, it's individual communities.
That's the way I read the state law.
Piece of legislation like the town of Bristol submitted theirs last year.
The statewide transportation process.
Commission?
Yeah, exactly.
We have a, we have a, there's a commission going on for that as well, for, for school, school transportation, and they are meeting, those meetings are ongoing. And so we're also waiting for some reports to come out of that, to provide guidance.
Okay. Any idea when that commission's slated to wrap up? And the only reason I ask is because, as we made apparent at the last meeting, the school department has a deficit this year, and it sounds like a good chunk of that is related to significant statewide transportation expenses that just appear out of thin air.
I, I think that the commission is scheduled to be until March or April, and so we, you know, we will have a report, we should have, or I should say, we should have a report before the end of the year. It is a joint commission between the House and Senate, so hopefully we can get something, a consensus amongst, amongst both chambers.
Okay.
I'm anticipating that we will have some, some, I, some proposals coming out of that commission.
Fingers crossed.
Are you referring to basically the zones that violates this, changes it into zones? Or you're talking about transportation in general?
Transportation in general. So like, as, as an example, it was, you know, shared with me earlier that the, you know, for instance, if we have statewide transportation, let's say we have two students at one house that have to go to the same exact place, it's basically like buying an airplane ticket. So even though the bus shows up and picks up two kids, takes them to the exact same location, we're paying double time for each of them. So, and there's no way for us to get out of statewide transportation and, for instance, bring our own bus in on the school side until the next school year.
Yeah, I don't know, there, there is a, there is a commission that's looking at the individual zones. For instance, like Warren, for instance, and Bristol are in the Providence zone. So the transportation there is within that particular zone, and they're looking at moving it into the Aquinic Island zone and incorporating the East Bay in that particular area. So there's impacts that way in terms of transportation fundings.
Okay.
As far as the Sepauid issue, the, the Bowens filed their response to the abutters on January first. It is still with the hearing officer. There has been no movement.
Okay.
And not on your list, but I know your harbor commission has been asking about this. The Chase Marina, G Z A, who is an engineer, I believe is G Z A, is doing borings on site. So when we get, they get their information back, they'll, they'll be able to determine what the soils are down there, how suitable everything is.
So circling back on the, on the homestead piece, I know it sounds like there's gonna be potentially a statewide effort. In the interim, would it be possible for us to get some legislation specifically enabling Tiverton? And I know Representative Edwards and I have spoken about this, but one of the things that came to my attention while canvassing is with our last revale, every three years, Tiverton seems to be at the forefront of these revales, and other communities follow. But for our, our constituents that live in the mobile home parks, if, you know, if you're, when you go through the revale, whatever the median number is, in our case, I think it was about forty-six percent, if you're above that line, your taxes, you're effectively getting a tax increase. If you're below it, you're effectively getting a tax decrease. And unfortunately, the large majority of the mobile homes in our town saw something like a hundred to a hundred and forty percent increase. So they effectively bore a ta, a significant tax increase. And so in discussions with our tax assessor, it seems like there was a case, I think, back in the seventies, and I can send this, you know, to everybody, but moving mobile homes out by class away from residential segment one is, sounds like something that we'd have to go to, go to court for if we had enabling legislation. So the better option maybe to look at something through homestead, where I think we have effectively more control.
If you have your solicitor draft something up, I can, we can get it done.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion on that, on something, to have him draft?
No, I don't think we would. We, what we'd need is if, you know, the legislation goes up to the State House, then we'd need a resolution and support.
Okay.
Correct.
I have some questions on a few of these others. Do you mind if I jump in?
By all means, Counselor Hayden.
Uh, the short-term rentals, is there estimated completion date?
I think it's gonna end last June.
Could be this year, could be Q two, could be.
Could be this year.
Okay, this year, okay. And.
It's a really involved subject, and there's a lot of controversy about it, both sides.
Don't wanna rush it, and any means of just, just curious. I know how tedious it probably is. The water districts, I think we really would like some direction on merging those and seeing what Coventry is doing from what I'm hearing around town and from the constituents that, that are reaching out to me.
Just so you know, the Coventry issue was not with water districts, it was fire districts, and ours are technically fire districts, but they were really fire districts.
Sure.
So it's a little bit different, but the mechanism should be the same.
Sure. No, apples to apples, but could be a, a template for us in some manner. The homestead exemptions, John stole the words right out of my mouth. Would love to move forward with that. As far as the transportation issue goes, I've actually reached out to several school departments in the state, and a lot of them are having the same issue. And maybe you are aware of this, maybe you are not, but thank you so much for coming down. And what's, what, what is happening is when a, a new student comes into a new town, and maybe that school doesn't have the correct resources that are adequate to meet that student's needs, they're being bused to another town where there is a school that maybe is, you know, has those adequate needs. And the cost for that specific transportation is, you know, you can look it up. I don't wanna quote it because I'm not exactly sure of the number, but it's, it's, it's expensive, right? Like, like, you could take a limo, expensive. So I don't know if that's something we can look at statewide to help out the school systems with the transportation costs on, on items specifically like that.
You're talking about the C T E programs that students may inter-enter with a particular community or town doesn't offer that.
Correct. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So again, you're probably aware of it already, but just, I've, I've, you know, I've had, I've had spoken to several school systems in, in the state, and they've all actually mentioned a concern about something similar to that or what was mentioned earlier by the other, the other councilmen. And then as far as the grants go, number eight, is there like, maybe Chief knows this, is there an alert system or notification system that rather than him having to stay on top of every single grant that's available, is there, you know?
No.
Too easy, too much of an easy button? Okay. All right, I digress. That's all I had.
What type of grants are you looking at?
Any and all, so that we can just say, hey, here's our pool of what, here's our pool of what we can apply for, and then he can pick which ones are needed, right? Like a certain website, a single sign-on portal or something?
Every department has their own criteria. They put out their own grants. I mean, it's not, there's not a universal set coming out of the department administration.
Understood.
I hear we're gonna be looking for two hundred million plus for the bridge.
We're gonna come to your house for that.
It is almost burned down.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to come down, guys.
One final question. Is there anything that, that you guys are looking at legislation that would be helpful for support from the council? And you don't have to answer now.
It's kinda, kinda early in the session. Right now, the way the process works is the first month and a half is bills submitted, and then once the bills are submitted, they are assigned to various committees. The committee chairs look at them for likeness or common topics, and then from there we'll start having hearings on it. So we see something that's impacting the town of Tiverton, and obviously, we're gonna ask for your input.
Actually, I do have one. It's a very, very old bill.
The repealer?
No, no. It's, it's about trap, neuter, and release. And I put it in on behalf of the town of Tiverton many years ago.
Yep.
The composition of the town council was completely one hundred percent different.
I know this one, though.
And I put it in on behalf of the town, and I have had it pass the House, what, six, seven times now? I actually have a good Senate sponsor this time.
Oh, yeah, who?
It's not you. And I can send you, I can send you the information on it. We have a lot of cats, a lot of feral cats in Tiverton, and what this bill would do, it allows the people to trap them, to neuter them, and to re-release them. State law precludes anyone from releasing an animal into the wild. State veterinarian has seen fit to allow us to do it, but we need a Senate sponsor.
I was on the council back then, Jay, or maybe just.
No, no, you were on the school committee. This is that long ago. You were still in the school committee.
I remember this, though.
Yeah. Jay Lambert was, was the president of the council.
Wonderful. So if that's, if that's moving forward, we'd be happy to.
Yeah, I'll send you.
Get a, get a resolution in front of this council.
You can send it. It's my infamous cat bill.
Mr. Solicitor, are you, you draft that up for us for the next meeting?
The homestead?
No, the resolution and support up.
I will get it to you. It's one of the first ones I put in, so it's a really low number this time.
Wonderful. Counselors, any other questions? No? Wonderful. Thank you all very much. Okay, next up, we have a public hearing advertised for Haystack Books LLC, DBA The Yellow House, Rhode Island, thirty-eight forty-two Main Road, request approval of a Class C liquor license. And we have a letter from the Union Public Library Association and the library itself. So you guys would like to come up?
Hi.
Hi.
And the library raised no, no objections, so.
I'm Jay Leeak.
Wonderful. So we, we have the application. Does the council have any questions? And this is a public hearing, so we will have to open that up as well.
Do you wanna say something?
So this is an application. We amended the ordinance to, the liquor ordinance to allow the Class C an extra, to create a Class C license, actually, in the town, the first one. They had come before us before. Apparently, they have received a zoning certificate from the town building official or the zoning enforcement officer. Since that time, there have been some questions about that zoning certificate, as well as maybe some restrictions, deed restrictions that may be on that property, as far as the, relates to its septic system and whatnot.
I haven't heard about that.
Yes, this was just brought up to me this weekend, to be honest with you. So, but I, and I guess my question to you is, where are you with the process with, as far as the Department of Health and, and all that kind of stuff?
Beginning of it.
So you're, you're, yeah, so, so everything will be, would, if, if this is granted, it would be contingent upon us satisfying all the other legal requirements, including zoning issues and septic issues, if there are any, that we'd have to go through the D E M.
I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
We, we actually have to do a public hearing, so, Counselor DiMediris.
How about parking, too? Because I don't know what you have available for parking. How many spaces do you have?
Um, I think we have six spaces, but there's parking easements everywhere in Four Corners, so all the buildings are shared.
Yeah, because that's also part of the whole meaning legal requirements, I understand. And one other question, do you have anyone living above?
Not right now, no.
All right, because what I understand is the septic is good for two employees and two people living above. So if you don't have anyone up there that will help you.
Yeah.
Getting through the, the septic requirement.
The septic, okay, yep.
Just to give you that hit.
Yeah.
Wonderful. So if there's no other questions from the council, I'd like, oh, Counselor Perry.
How many tables are in this location?
Um, it's early stages right now, so we're a bookstore, and right now, we have our two room, front rooms open that wouldn't really have, like, seating tables, just retail. And then the back room, we hosted a workshop yesterday, so there would be maybe like two or three. Don't quote me on that, but it's a small room, so it kinda has a max capacity with people.
Isn't there something on the books about you have to have for each table, parking for?
That's for a restaurant.
Just for restaurants, not for?
This is a little different. Doesn't really fit in our current zone perfectly.
Okay.
Because this is a bookstore that's gonna, my understanding is have book clubs and have wine and, it's just wine, pretty much.
Oh, it's just wine?
Wine, maybe, too.
Oh, okay.
Possibly cheese, your proximity to a cheese store.
It's not, it's not a restaurant, so it's.
It's not a restaurant.
The concept is to have a book club, and you can go in and buy some wine as well, so.
All right.
So the restaurant doesn't really fit.
Okay.
Yeah, not, definitely not a restaurant.
Counselor?
You don't have a kitchen.
No, we don't.
But we are giving a liquor license, a C liquor license, which is a pub license.
Correct. That's, that's the best fit we have.
Yes, so it's, so maybe we should try to.
That's what threw me off.
Fix this a little bit because I know that pubs aren't allowed down that area. So is there a way that we could kind of make this a liquor license C for only this kind of events and not up? I think this needs a new zoning or planning, right?
Well, the, the license is controlled by the state. The C is, the C is a pub license.
Okay.
I, I will concede that our zoning doesn't quite fit.
Right.
This, because we don't have a retail with a, with, with liquor on the side, basically. It's not, it's not a pub. They wouldn't be able to put a pub there because it's not zoned for a pub.
Yeah, it's kinda weird because we're giving a pub license to a bookstore.
The best fit would be, is an accessory to a bookstore. Is a, is, that's, and that's the, we might have to clarify that in the zone a little bit, but that's, that's basically what I think would maybe fix the problem. That it would be accessory to the bookstore.
But it would be a zoning.
Would be a definition of what an accessory use for a bookstore was. Because the concern, the concern would be that you don't wanna open up every retail. There's only two C licenses, by the way, out, so this would be one of them.
Maximum of sixteen, right, if we wanted to amend it?
I think, I think it was sixteen. Is that what it was?
I'm just asking. Statewide, but the ordinance, the statewide only, ordinance only allows two.
We did two to allow at least this to go forward with the council's support. I lost my train of thought. The issue would be.
The pub.
We don't want, we don't wanna make every retail business available to have a liquor license. But this is a little different. This is the concept. I'm sure the owners would not be, I think we could try to limit it, put restrictions on the license by saying it's a Class C license, which really allows you to serve a lot of different liquids, but, you know, obviously limited to, like, book clubs and those kind of things. We could put that on the license if we so choose. But it's up to you.
My, my, my only suggestion, and I know we have to revisit all the special use permits. My, my, my only suggestion, and I know we have to revisit all the special use permits, you know, we could essentially create a separate special use permit for that village commercial zone, so that would allow the Class C liquor licenses.
Good, that's, that's an option.
That would be the, probably the easiest route for this specific business.
I think the easiest way to, just to define it as accessory use to a, a retail.
Okay, Counselor.
Under that Class C, aren't you required to have some type of food?
No.
No, well...
No, you can, you can, yes, prepackaged, like peanuts and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah, but not disturbed, yeah.
But not, not something, nothing that's cooked on the premises.
Right, but you got to have some type of food.
Correct.
They could have that vending machine, and they'd, they would satisfy it.
So we have prepackaged.
Lupino beans, I think it's.
We got the lupini beans.
That's right.
Wonderful, if there's no other questions from the council, I'd like to open up the public hearing.
Just one other question, do we have any other pending?
No.
Class C liquor licenses incoming from anyone else in the town? Okay, thank you.
There's only one left, if this was granted tonight.
Just understood.
All right, so like to open up the public hearing, would anybody like to speak about this license? Anybody like to speak about this license? Anybody like to speak about this license?
I'd like to make a motion.
Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, I'll entertain a moment, a motion, Counselor Hayden.
Sorry, I'd like to make a motion to approve it pending all legal...
Subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Subject to meeting all legal requirements, and, second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Awesome idea, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck. Will do.
Okay, appointments and resignations, North End and Industrial/Business Park Advisory Subcommittee, there's a 14-member board, there is one vacancy, is Counselor, former Counselor Burke just outlined, there's soon to be two vacancies. We have two applicants, Adam Reposa, 31 Carpenter Street, requests appointment for a term ending 8/1/2025, and Paul Amaral, 9 Watermark Drive, requests appointment for a term ending 8/1/2025. Mr. Amaral, since Mr. Reposa's not here, I don't know if you'd like to come up, because we have to technically interview, correct?
One, two, yep. Two for one.
Two for one, yes, this will be, this will be very short.
Paul, I have to say, I'm pleased you, I'm pleased you decided to do this, because you're older than I, and you know, don't know what I'm saying, better than me, and I know pretty well.
Mr. Amaral, if you wouldn't mind giving her the, you know, the eye from middle school, that would be great.
He was my guidance counselor.
I got a couple of students.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Amaral, why would you like to join this committee?
Well, obviously, I believe very strongly in volunteerism. I've been on a few boards and commissions on the town already. I'm currently on the Board of Canvases, I've lived in North Tiverton my entire life, started out on State Avenue in a cold water flat, then we bought our first house on Beardsworth Road, which was 1955. I, believe it or not, the section of the villages that I live in is still in North Tiverton, so I've been a lifelong North Tiverton resident. I know the area well, would like to see it prosper, know the history of North Tiverton, and I think I can be of help to the committee.
Thank you, any other counselors have any questions? Counselor DeMeaders.
I'd like to make a motion, because Adam isn't here, and I understand there will be another opening, and I'm also part of this group, I'd like to make a motion to waive our policy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor? None opposed, Counselor DeMeaders.
I'd like to make a motion to, for Paul Amaral to be on the North End and Industrial Business Park Advisory Committee.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor? None opposed, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Amaral.
Next up, Library Board of Trustees, we have a seven-member board, three-year terms, one vacancy, James Walter Forrest, requests appointment for a term ending 10/15/2025, Mr. Forrest.
Your choice, whatever's most comfortable. I'll be short, so I'll stand.
By all means.
Hello, everyone, my name is Jim Forrest, my wife and I have been residents of Tiverton for 11 years now, and we really enjoy it, it's a, it's a great town. I'm a retired CPA, been retired for three years now, I'm doing a volunteer treasury work, work, it should be volunteer director work at the Village on Mount Hope Bay, or the boathouse, and when I was working for 40-plus years, I was able to do four volunteer treasury positions during that cycle, I was treasurer of a land trust, actually in Tiverton, a condominium association in Bristol, a Habitat for Humanity, and finally, a local church in, in Needham Mass. So I'm looking for something to do, I've never been with a, let's say, a volunteer organization that doesn't need a numbers guy, and I'm a numbers guy, I want something to do, and I enjoy it. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Nope, hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to waive our policy.
So moved.
All right, motion's made and seconded, all in favor? None opposed? Now it'd be...
Make a motion to appoint James Walter Forrest to the vacancy ending 10/15/25, that's a short term, you'll be back.
Second.
For the Library Board of Trustees.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor? None opposed, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, now we have the annual tree warden appointment to expire January 31st, 2025, we have one applicant, he's currently in there, it's Frankie Ramos, Manchester's Tree and Landscaping, 13 Edmund Lane, requests reappointment. Mr. Ramos is not here, annual, annual appointment, I'm sorry?
That's right, babe, that's, that's next week.
My apologies, 2026, nice catch.
It's only two days.
Two days, so, given that we've interviewed him a couple of times, the appointment's annual, I think Mr. Ramos has been in this position for, I don't know, the last six or 10 years, do we have a motion to reappoint?
I make a motion, I know Frankie's done a great job, I make a motion to appoint Frankie Ramos to the tree warden appointment to expire January 30, 2026.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, it's January 31st, 2026, all in favor? None opposed? Congratulations wherever you are, Mr. Ramos. Next up is the Zoning Revision Committee, we have vacancy for one council member, Counselor DeMeaders, do you have a motion?
I do, I make a motion to put Counselor Janik on the Zoning Revision Committee, I'm not doing this, because she's not here.
She is.
I spoke to her, and she's interested in it, so she hasn't left the room, and I'm doing this, so.
Do I have a second?
I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Congratulations to Counselor Janik in Hawaii.
In Hawaii.
All right, 9A, I see our friend from MEGA is here, so let's kick it off.
Mr. President, were we going to move up the school committee?
Right after this one.
Thank you.
I promised, I promised MEGA that we'd get them in and out, so.
And I promised the school committee, just make it.
Mr. Administrator, when you make promises, you can't keep, I'm kidding, they'll be up next.
Thank you, Mr. President, fellow counselors, my name's Jim Semenow, I'm a representative with MTG MEGA Disposal, we're a waste connections company, one of the third largest company in the country, North America, behind Waste Management and Republic. I've been associated with the town since we've been servicing for six, seven years now, and I know through the last couple of bid processes that the automation in versus manual has come up, you know, a few times, and as well as the cost associated with the program going forward. Council President reached out to me to provide some information, which I provided back in a letter, Dave McKermore sends his apologies, he couldn't be here tonight.
No worries at all.
What's that?
I said, no worries at all.
No, so the rate that I provided to the town includes the carts, providing two carts, 95 gallon to every resident, one for trash, one for recycling, keeping the collection services the same as they are now in terms of weekly collection, I believe there's eight to 10 weeks throughout the year for yard waste collections, and the only thing we ask is to provide a minimum of a five-year contract term, so we can amortize the carts and the new trucks, new automated trucks, for a reasonable period of time, and basically, it's keeping everything the same, I know the council president's concerned with the 65 gallon versus the 95 gallon, and there's no correct way to do this throughout the state, towns have done it differently in terms of both 95 gallons. My feeling is, you want to probably keep the recycling as a 95 gallon size to encourage the recycling, so people have plenty of room, and maybe go into a 65 gallon for the trash, again, to encourage people to recycle as much as they can in terms of a single stream.
So if I could just interrupt here, the prior council was, gave the prior town administrator a directive to explore the possibilities of shifting trash collection to the automated system, we did have support from both the litter commission, and there was one other commission, as specifically as it relates to automated for the recycling, it seems like we're in a position now where we're going to have to revisit this at a future meeting, so we can look at all the different options, but my suggestion here would be to get a sense from the council as to, you know, what we'd want to look at, and specifically, rather than, you know, amortize out and have essentially timed payments on the contract for the bins, you know, is there an option for us to purchase the bins outright, because we do have casino capital expenditures that we can spend, so that way the, they don't weigh on the cost of the contract.
And we've never really had a town in that position, one or two other times, where they were able to purchase it, the carts upfront. Without purchasing power, the cart costs usually coming, will come in just under 800,000. If the town wishes to pursue it, I could give you the information, the contacts and all that, probably a little over 800,000.
Okay.
Again, at 95 gallon size, if you switch one of them out to 65, you could probably save about $5, $6 per cart.
So 800,000 would be for how many?
Two, for every household, so 13,700, 13,300, 400, something like that, was it 6600 units a town, I think?
I think he's already timed it, too.
13,400.
Each household's getting two.
Yeah, for 800. You want to purchase some extras, so you have them in stock to switch out.
Yep, now, and the, the goal here would be to have an orderly transition, you know, if we're able to move forward with this, obviously, it's not something we'd be able to do until at least next fiscal, because there's a lead time with purchasing the vehicle versus how we're doing it today, and then we'd have to have a lead time in order to order the barrels and then get the barrels distributed, and Mr. Semenow has assured me that they actually, part of the contract would be some, you know, individuals who would come down, assemble the barrels, and then deliver them to all the residents.
Professionals, yeah, assembly distribution of all the carts.
But in advance of that, and this, my question would be, other communities that have gone this route, I remember vividly when Newport made the switch, and there was tremendous amount of outrage over the size of the barrels, specifically from some residents who didn't use as much trash, and there was an option to go, you know, elect to have the, the smaller sized barrel, so what advice could you give us in the town to be able to, A, get the word out, and then B, collect that information to see who wants the smaller barrel versus the larger barrel, if we were to go that route?
Every attempt we've made in the past to provide 65 gallon trash carts anyways, has always come back with residents don't think it's enough, and I know at my household, I have 35 gallon barrels, and two of them is 70 gallons, I mean, you have to have three of them out full, you know, to be 95 gallon for a week, it's just, people want the biggest one, they can get their hands on, even if they only use half of it, two-thirds of it, is our, you know, and for the minor, cost-saving $6 per cart, you know, you're better off just commit to the 95 gallon, purchasing a few hundred carts for the elderly or people who don't want to wheel it out, you know, think it's too heavy, and then you switch them out afterwards, so basically, you're distributing 95 gallon, two 95 gallons to every household, and then after they get it, if they feel it's too big, too heavy, we can provide a switch-out program after the first couple cycles of collection, you know what I'm saying? And then it would just be spears for the town anyways, because you would want to purchase some spare containers, so if there's 100 residents that want to switch out from 95 to 65...
I would tell you, we have a significant portion that is...
Would be interesting.
In that higher demog, that older demographic, so that's certainly something I think we'd want to survey.
But whether it's a survey online, or a postcard to return, or something like that, that gets a handle on it, you don't want to commit to it, because people always switch it out, oh, this is too small, I want bigger, but it gives you an idea of how many extras you should buy to be able to switch it out, you know what I'm saying?
Counselor.
Well, when I'm thinking like my household, I would just want one, so if you bought my household two, that would be one of your...
Not two, one's recycling, one's trash.
Right, it's just a matter of the size of them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One blue, yeah.
Okay, I'm glad you just brought that up.
Now, a truck can handle, with the automated arms, can handle 65, 95 gallons equally, it cannot really handle 35 gallon, small, small ones, the grips and the fingers on the truck is just too small, it falls through, it falls into the truck, just too many problems, so 65 or 95 is the other way to go, and what we're, excuse, and what we're encouraging towns lately is to purchase all the same color cart, whether it's a gray dark cart, and having a different color lid on it, so they would be all gray carts, 13,000 gray carts, and half would have gray lids for trash, and half would have blue lids for recycling, that would be the designation on which cart is which, and that way, lids have probably become more problematic than the cart itself, the cart has a 10-year life warranty, so, but if the cart lid breaks, or it gets cracked or something, you could just swap out the lids for 10 bucks, $12, you know, versus having to buy a whole new cart, so, it's something we ourselves are doing, and we're encouraging other communities to do, because saves your costs down the road a little bit, so.
So they show up with the new automated trucks, and there are a few bags still outside of the new trash barrels, is there additional cost for that, is that built in to the contract?
Well, most of the towns, we don't accept it, so...
We won't take it?
Yeah, right, correct, that's why it's important to have a larger enough size.
So what, what we would be talking about here is a complete and total phase out of the pay-as-you-throw program.
Understood.
And so we'd, we'd be out of the maroon bags that people seem to not like very much.
Would it, would it be a phase out, John, or would you have to get a sticker?
That, we, we would, we as a council would have to discuss what the parameters around that.
So it wouldn't be a total phase out, you still might have a cost of...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And Portsmouth is going through that now with the enterprise zone for the transfer station and moving the curbside program, so they basically will have two enterprise funds to support there, both curbside and...
So my understanding, just for everybody in the town, and for everyone here, I want to make sure this is right, is we eliminate the maroon trash bags that we're paying for, we replace that with these 95 or 65 gallon receptacles, we purchase a sticker now, instead of the maroon trash bags, we can use whichever bag that we'd like on a go-forward.
Correct, as long as it fits in the cart, and the lid on the cart is closed.
Okay.
That's important, because people try to balance things on top, and as soon as it gets lifted, they fall off.
Okay, thank you for confirming that, and then as far as the terms go, if we were to build the price of the barrels into the contract, do you have three-year terms, four-year terms, five-year terms?
Five-year minimum.
10-year terms?
Five-year minimum.
How high does it go, is it a better price, if you go higher?
We've gone 10 years with a ton of warranty.
For, for this instance, I think we'd probably be better off writing the check one time, because we have...
I understand that, I understand, but could we have the proposal in both manners, so that we could compare and reconcile, so could we have it built in, and also if we purchase it?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, that would be, that would be very, very helpful.
You have to pay for it, on my end, that's the easy part of it, you know, same as whether you purchase it upfront or not, I mean, we're just used to roll it into the rates over an annual basis.
That would help the analysis, thank you so much, that's all.
Now, the other thing, if it doesn't fit in a cart, we're not providing now, but bulk service, so, other communities, we probably provide bulk service for residents, they call in, they get on a list, and then we would charge them, or the town would charge them with a sticker or something, based on what they have out there, 30 bucks, $50 for based on what they have out there, thirty bucks, fifty dollars for a couch or a loveseat or something like that. So residents that don't have a mechanism, I mean, we're not doing it now, but we do in other communities that we can provide once a month bulk service or something for.
Yard waste?
Well, yard waste we're doing now for like eight, ten weeks a year.
Yeah.
It's like a couple of times in the summer, every other week, weekly during the fall, October and that. Probably about eight to ten weeks a year, I think.
I did have one more question. If someone wants to get two trash barrels or two recyclables because they have, you know, an army that lives in their house or something, you know,
We can do it.
Additional sticker, how does that work?
It's up to the town to okay the authorization to purchase another one. Most towns that do it charge the residents. So not only for the cart, but for the extra service, extra trash. So whether it's a couple of hundred bucks a year to get a second one, you know what I'm saying?
Thank you.
Most communities restrict it, some have that option where they, because you don't have the extra bags on the side that we, you know, we can't service with the automated truck, but there's an opportunity to purchase it, you know?
Thank you.
All right. Now, Mr. President's also said about a transfer station, if the town goes to that route, it's such a long commute to the Johnston facility that you would have some, quite a bit of savings if there was a local mechanism to dump trash and/or recyclables locally, you know? That's when that, like, the whole landfill is open, you know what I'm saying? Once they come in here collecting, dumping in town, it's another thing having to make a trip over the bridge.
The biggest, the biggest driver right now is overtime and mileage on our contract, okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's time and a half, fuel, fuel's not cheap anymore, trucks are expensive, they're four hundred thousand.
How much lead time would you guys need, I mean?
Six to eight months.
Six to eight months, okay.
Six to eight months, carts usually aren't a problem. Resin prices go up and down, not a big fluctuation, but it's the trucks, it's the purchasing of the trucks. We're still getting trucks in from twenty-twenty-four that were on order. You know, say they'll be rolling in in twenty-twenty-five, so.
So six to eight months?
Because we're a large company throughout the country, we can move trucks around the country in terms of who, ooh, you got a new contract, let's move two trucks from down south up here. So, because we have such a lot, large purchase base being a national company, so.
It's six to eight months from when the contract's signed, six to eight months from when?
From when the contract signs.
To implement, to be fully implemented, everyone has two new barrels in town.
Right, we won't purchase trucks or carts until the contract's signed. And then you don't want to be implementing in the middle of winter either just for, you know, we've done it a few times.
Fair to say now is a good time to be starting to.
March, March, April through kind of October, one is usually when you want to kind of implement the program, so. But again, we would distribute the carts a week or two ahead of time, I wouldn't be too far ahead because we don't want them scoring up. A week or two ahead of the start date, the company would come in and distribute the carts to every household. They will all have serial numbers, they will have the town logos on them. But the serial number, you'll get a spreadsheet with all the addresses and the carts distributed to each household. The town will get the spreadsheet at the end so you know where all these carts belong to. If they get disappeared or roll down the road or somebody has three of them, they should only have two of them. So the serial number tracking will be able to give you the list of what household you received it initially anyway, so.
So if, if it would please the council, I'm obviously not going to call for a vote because we haven't seen all the, the options yet, but would it be all right with the council if I worked with the administrator to work with Mr. Semino and his group to bring back all the detailed specs at a future meeting, ideally by the next one, if possible?
Every other week recyclable is another one.
Yeah.
But basically you're doubling the quantity of recyclables, creating a more problem because transportation is the biggest cost, so.
Yeah, do you need a second?
No, I just.
No, I, I think we should get a proposal as, if you could update the notes that we made.
Purchase the carts upfront, overtime, things like that, you know what I'm saying? Different terms, different contract terms and that.
So we'll, we'll, we'll try and get this on the February tenth meeting with all the backup information so we can have a more in-depth discussion and then make a determination as far as which direction to go and then outline the plan so we can effectively communicate with residents should we move forward.
Yeah, I'd love to hear the public comments on the, the maroon trash bags versus the barrels and see where everyone stands because I.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Mr. Semino, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, now, without objection, I'd like to move item seven D up to.
So moved.
We don't even need a motion, if, there's no objection, we'll move it up. All right, so seven D is going to be council president Edwards, discussion and possible vote on the allocation of funds from the casino special revenue fund account and schedule a special meeting. So we have a couple of school requests and some municipal requests. Start with the schools, if that's all right? I don't think your ask was thick enough.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of town council, thank you for having us with you tonight. We'd like your consideration for some capital items. They've been outlined for you in a document sent to you on January sixteenth. There are eight items on that list and some of those have been revised. So if you want us to go through that and then subsequently, there were two other requests that came in on January twenty-second. So to your pleasure, Mr. President, I don't know if you want us to review each one in order or just if you have any questions.
Counselor Paul?
There's, I'm looking at two here, school requests dated one sixteen and one twenty-two.
Might be in the same packet, dude.
It's in the same packet.
No, but is it multiple things or is it three things?
Yeah, one twenty-two has two, two, two requests, one for a roof and one for heating.
Hey, I don't see what you're talking about. Well, this is what we're looking at. So what are you requesting this evening?
That's, yeah, that's what I was getting at.
See, we're, we're looking at this, all these requests.
Yeah, you've got one through eight.
You're requesting all of this?
Correct.
Tonight?
There's been some adjustment to it.
Tonight, and are all the safety, safety stuff done? There's absolutely no other safety stuff besides what's listed.
What's there, yep. It's all the Homeland Security report and the other report done first.
So you're asking for? Okay, you're asking for over seven, over six hundred thousand right now?
Five ninety-one-five.
Yeah, but then.
No, that's money coming back.
Yeah, those are returns.
That, so these are.
Five hundred and ninety-one, five hundred is what I have.
Okay.
Yeah, on the second page is, is the balance of unspent dollars from prior projects that was put back into the casino account.
Go ahead, go over it.
Do you want to go through each one, John, or do you want us?
By all means.
All right.
And I'm assuming that we have all the estimates and backup and everything here, so.
So the first request is the one that came a couple of weeks ago, excuse me, a couple of minutes ago for the exterior doors. So as you know, a company came out about twenty-four, twenty-six months ago and did a review of all the exterior doors. We've already done eight doors so far, those were just completed. The lead times are, we're seeing sixteen monthly times, so those were just completed. So now we're re-requesting the eleven, eleven more doors. These are doors that have been problematic and caused the custodians to spend countless hours with continual repairs or adjustments. One of the doors today, I was over at Pecasset and the custodian was having a big time trouble trying to just open the door alone. Next is wiring, wiring and cabling. What this is, is just really enhancing the internet. We have a rate funding through RIDE that basically we are able to get fifty percent reimbursement. So we're asking for twenty to cover the project, but ten would come back to the council once the project is completed, if, if accepted tonight. Next is THS athletic field repairs. This is to improve the field conditions with much, much needed needs such as aeration, overseed fertilizer and minor repairs. Next is electricity for lower fields. This is thirty thousand, this is something you don't have in your packet because it was a, basically a ballpark estimate as we work with different vendors. But we're, we're thinking, I had a quick conversation with Craig because of his experience in electrici, electrical experience and he thinks that number's going to be much lower, which is great, but that's the request of this time just to fund this project. This is to run electric to the lower athletic field so we can use things like pitching machines and whatnot. Number five is install touch views. This is touch views in each classroom, so if you remember back, back in the day, use the blackboard with chalk. This is basically what the touch view is, it's technology in the classroom where the teacher can use it.
Could I stop you right there?
Yep.
Didn't we purchase these some years ago?
The PTO at Pecasset did, but not the school purchased a couple.
And Fort Ranger and some other schools?
Yeah, we probably have about thirty in the district right now.
Because I, I hate to say this, do you know where they are in Ranger right now? Because I could tell you where they are, they got thrown away. Yes, they did.
The touch views?
Yes. Yes.
Well, can we get inventory of how many the school system has left in place so that we know accurately how many that we actually need? Because I know the request says forty for one school, forty for another school. Let's find out exactly what we need.
The quote says how many is needed in each school.
Teachers didn't like them, so they got rid of them all. And here we go again, buying more.
I will say, David, when we met with all the principals.
You, you check it out tomorrow, okay? You go to the Ranger school and see how many touchscreens they have. Remember, I got people who work in school departments. Thank you.
I, I did speak with a few teachers and they actually said they, they would love to have them, it would eliminate the projecters. Yeah, they'd love to have them because it eliminates the projectors. That was the feedback I got, just to be the other side of the coin.
Well, if we're going to keep them in the schools, let's keep them in the schools and not throw them away.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not, I would have to look into that, but I will say when we met with all the principals in the department head, this was the number one request in each school's supply request list. Next is repair the tennis courts, I think we're all familiar with these, that the desk we need to repair. Number seven is replace boys' bathroom positions.
Can we just talk about the tennis court for a second? So we have a hundred and eight thousand is what's requested. I'm not sure that's totally correct, right? Because we have different options, option one, option two. So that number would be a little less if we went with a different option. Is that correct? So options two, three and four, would add up to about ninety-seven thousand?
The way it was presented to me is each option is doing something within the tennis court. One is repairing cracks, one is repairing.
So we have, we have two options for repairing cracks. We have option one for crack repair and then option two.
Correct.
It seems like option two would be the better way to go.
Well, there's two things happening, this is crack repairs and then there's also replacing the poles of the nets themselves, which would be under each option. I know what you mean, it looks a little confusing by option one, two or three.
Right, so option three would be to replace the poles would be ninety-six hundred dollars. So, I mean, the poles that are there are bent or, I mean.
They need to be repositioned.
Okay, repositioned, okay, so.
Yeah.
Still, it would be options probably two, three and four and we would have a savings of ten thousand six hundred dollars or it would be options one, three and four and we would have a much larger savings.
Yeah, so what this, they're giving you options, but what it is, is they're, they're giving you options, you could do one of four. I'm recommending doing the whole thing because they're in desperately need to repair. So option one is taking out cracks and existing debris of crack.
No, I, I think what counselor, it's one, it's one or two.
One or two.
And then three and four.
Yeah. I have a question, do we have a tennis team?
What number is it?
Yeah, they won the state champion, ladies.
Recently, right?
Recently, and we have boys in the spring.
And is the tennis court open to the public at any time?
After school hours.
After school hours and how about weekends?
Yeah, all the time.
Yeah, okay.
So really, if we're going two, three and four, your ask is ninety-seven, seven, nine, five?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, I see, yeah, it's one or two.
So two, three and four would be the better options on, on the crack repair. And then that would still give us some savings. So we, we would save, you know, the ten-six on that. It'd just be a little less, just for.
Yeah, no.
And, and.
Yeah, I read it differently, so why do you want it up?
Denise, just so you also know, we're also looking to, on the tennis courts. I've worked out some stuff where, so I watched these kids play, I believe it was a championship game, under horrible conditions on that tennis court. It, it's kind of embarrassing to the town of Tiverton where they had work lights from Home Depot trying to light a tennis court.
I do have a question though, when we built this, I was on the school committee, did we have lighting then? My memory's not. So when we, when we first did this, we, I don't know how many years ago, but we, we replaced the whole thing. Was there lighting back then? No, I don't recall that, that's why I'm asking, because someone did mention that to me about the lighting.
It's, it's, it was.
No, but.
It was appalling, it was absolutely horrible, these poor kids.
That's what he's saying.
These poor kids were out there trying to play tennis with work lights taped to the fence, on stands, extension cords running. It was just horrible. It's, it's, I've gone to state complexes all over, I mean, sports complexes all over the state and you come back to Tiverton and we have the worst conditions of any sports complex. I don't care if it's a baseball field, a soccer field, a football field, our town farm. You know, this goes back to me saying we should be taking care of our own fields. Our town farm wreck area, our fields are a mess. The football field desperately needs to be redone as far as the seating and all that. There's coaches carrying barrels of sand before a varsity game and filling holes with sand so the kids don't get hurt. It's just, we can do better, we can do a lot better. I am also working on a project to try to light one tennis court through my vendor, who has donated some lights to try to, to try to light one tennis court so the kids can at least play one match under the lights. We can't do the whole thing, obviously, because it's a big expense, but we are looking to light one court. It's just, it's a shame, so I'm going to support a lot of this stuff. We just got to do better.
But Greg, what, what you're saying right now is two, three and four, correct?
Yes.
Not one?
Yes.
Two, three and four for ninety-seven.
Okay.
Yes.
For that one specific quote, right?
And then we get to the last one, number eight.
That's one that's being excluded.
Great.
Number eight, number eight's being removed?
Yeah, I was going to, I'm on number seven, but I'll.
All right, so there's, there's just, I, I think between the electrical at the baseball field and X and A and number eight, which, I mean, the ten thousand dollars to paint the doors, there's, there's forty thousand dollars of savings right there off the bat.
Yeah, I'm going to save you the trouble of going over the last two because they're pretty self-explanatory.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion.
Hold on, I have two more.
Wait a minute, there's two more and I'm not, I'd like to know what's in the casino account.
That's what I'm pulling up now. And where's Madam Treasurer?
She's right in front of me here. How much money is actually in there? I know I knew this, but so many, what? I'm not kidding.
Want me to, want me to keep going in the way she's?
Yes, please do.
Because I'm just curious before. Somewhere in that area. Yeah, three point two, okay, go ahead.
So the last two requests go into the one twenty-two documents. And I can go back to the one sixteen document about the reimbursements, Denise, if you have any questions. But the other two are pretty straightforward. So one's a roof diagnosis. We have a, we had a Tremco roof conduct a preliminary roof inspection in early December at preschools, the middle school, Ranger and the high school and the admin building together. The high school roof showed significant issues, including multiple ponding areas across various sections. You should only be, you should only have about two square feet of ponding, we're seeing three to five square feet. And there's pictures in the report attached, but middle school Ranger were in good conditions. Overall, it is recommended that we perform more detailed diagnostics. One of the reasons is we do have an active warranty and I think the diagnostics is going to show, show the vendor that we have the warranty under that these, that really we need a more detailed report. We don't want to go into repairs, we don't want repairs to be made without thorough diagnostics to resolve certain issues while overlooking others. I want to make sure it's, it's corrected the right way one time. So the cost of that is eighty-three hundred. And again, you can see with your attachment, you can see all the pictures of the different issues we're seeing. And for a roof that's barely, almost seven years old, this is just, it's really unacceptable.
It's really unacceptable.
Yeah, unacceptable, so. And you got the quotes of each school, but obviously based on the, the preliminary diagnostics, we're only recommending doing the high school. And again, this just gives us some manpower to go, you know, to show why we.
I can't believe it.
Yeah, go after the warranty. Next is THS heater repair, similar issue where the compressor at the high school, we've had a couple of compressors continue to fail and we kind of asked ourselves the same questions. Why, why do these keep occurring? It's kind of crazy that they're recurring every three to six years. Things are made differently, but we had a great review of our situation. They reviewed everything from the electrical boxes in the ceiling units and the piping connections. And they also used some technology tools to systematically evaluate the insulation. Come to find out, there was some prior issues with the prior insulation that we will take some recourse on. However, to be transparent and honest, I just don't trust that company fixing the issue. I'd rather have this team that did find the issue, complete, complete repair of the unit. And then also at the same time, review the rest of the compressors that are in the district. There's four at the high school, obviously I just mentioned one being replaced, so there'd be three others and there's three at the middle school. And to give you a couple of examples of these issues, it's basically trying to run a car without oil. Oil's leaving the compressor, not returning. You're lucky to have these compressors last one to two years. On the electrical side, the compressor's just not talking. It's kicked, the compressor on the rooftop is kicking out the proper controls, but it's not signaling to the actual unit in the, in the ceiling. That cost is, we did a, we asked the vendor to give us a quick cost, obviously on the twenty-second to get. to get to, um, to get it into the agenda tonight. So he gave us a cost of not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. With that said, that's all the requests, I just wanted to take your attention to, um, some, we do have some budget surplus return. This would be on the one sixteen document, page two. So I just want to let the, let the council know, we've half completed these four projects on top. So we will be returning this fund to the casino funding. As we mentioned a couple times, we do have another probably two hundred and seventy to two hundred and eighty in the next six months that we will return. These were estimates based on an architec for some of the projects that already been funded. And in the five-year plan, they gave us, they gave us, uh, an estimate that was quite high, so we do have some money to return. So we did, we did add some additional, uh, money to those requests, those two additional requests for the roof and the heat at the high school. And as, uh, Council Comittee just mentioned, we have some savings. So really the, once the money's all returned and, and the reimbursables are put into the mix, it's really a net effect of forty thousand. But I do agree that some of those revert, well, almost all those reimbursables won't come till FY twenty-six and these projects need to be funded in total first. But there is some, there is some money being returned to casino in the next, um, the next six months by June thirtieth.
Counselor?
Brandon, so when you get reimbursed, you're gonna pay the casino money back?
Correct.
And I don't know, and then you're going to go into your, the other account, the reimbursement account, which when you get reimbursement, it only goes to you guys.
Yep.
So it's not part of the casino. So you're still paying the casino.
Yep.
But once that is paid off, this reimbursement is gonna go into your other account.
Yep.
Which we still have to approve.
Correct.
But it'll only be for schools' purpose. I don't know if you guys knew this.
And that, those reimburseals won't come till next year.
Won't come till next year. So whenever, whenever we approve today, maybe some of this will go into your other account because I believe you're probably gonna pay the casino off before.
Yeah, we do have some.
You know what I'm saying, it's gonna be tricky.
Yeah, we have a little bit of locker room still to resolve.
Right, you still have locker room, okay, all right, all right.
I have a quick question for the treasurer. I have the document in front of me that you've sent out a couple weeks ago on the balances, so.
If I may, Mr. President.
Yes.
She just handed us a note, so the available allocation from gaming is three million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty thousand. One hundred and twenty dollars, excuse me.
My, my question is, that reimbursement account, are there? That's correct, so that's not fund six forty restricted capital?
No, that's, that's the town capital.
Okay, so we have, do we know what we have in the school reimbursement account that we can still tell them to allocate? Zero, okay.
Well, what John is looking at is the town council capital account. That's what it looks like, do you know the restricted? Okay, so that's what.
Yep.
Yep, yep. Yeah, that's what John has. Yeah, that's, that's what John has pulled up.
Casino again, one more time, Mr. Administrator?
Three million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty. And the capital municipal is eight hundred and forty, eight, three, nine.
Okay, we're not touching that then.
That's what you have to do.
Okay, so, I mean, obviously, you know, when it comes to security issues, right? Me personally, I don't see an issue with that, so when you tell me, hey, we have doors that might not be locking, obviously that, my opinion, I think that's something that we should prioritize. If I'm looking at this, if you're saying wiring and cables, twenty thousand dollars, ten thousand of which is gonna go back in to be reallocated to some of these future projects, my opinion, no issue. The athletic field repairs, again, we want to make sure we have, you know, robust sports programs. Thirteen thousand dollars feels like short money. On the thirty thousand for the electricity for the lower fields, um, I know it's been an option potentially for us to leverage some of the equipment from DPW, so I would assume that that number ultimately will come back significantly. And again, thirty grand, short money. Boys bathroom partitions, again, thirty-five thousand, that's fine. The roof, my opinion, you gotta do it because we want to make sure we hit the warranty for it. The, the two questions I have here are on the THS heating that you mentioned, that, you know, not to exceed twenty thousand. It's my understanding that there is some, there were still some significant bills as it relates to Fort Barton's heating issue as well. And so my suggestion, if, if we were gonna move forward with anything from a heating infrastructure, is let's put a number to it, knowing that the dollars are gonna come back. And part of what's gotten the schools in this deficit is that they have, you know, significant expenditures for repairs to both heating systems. So in my opinion, I say we, we would, we should look at, for the heating thing, a number of a hundred thousand dollars. Covers whatever has already been spent, the supposed fixes, make sure we get the heating fixed. Like actually get it fixed.
What's the estimate for the fix on Fort Barton? Eighty grand seems a lot.
And my, and my point that, well, the, so the schools have already spent forty-two thousand on that. So, and it's my understanding it's still not fixed.
It was forty-two thousand at the high school, correct?
No, twenty-two at high school and Fort Barton, uh, twenty and twenty-two, forty-two, yeah. And then we're asking for another twenty tonight. But as I mentioned, we do have some compressors that need to be re-looked at. And we also have, uh, we just did a walkthrough this morning at Picassett and we have some things we need to address there.
Every day you guys have a bigger list.
So Fort Barton repair is not on here, how much more do you need right now?
We, we don't have that, we're waiting for preliminary. So what happened, just to give you a recap is, Fort Barton was done, we got the building back up to seventies, which is great. However, there's still some additional things that need to occur. What we're waiting on is we were trying to find a drawing from twenty years ago. We finally got it today. We sent it to the plumbers and they're gonna do their report and give us back a report with a number. I'm thinking eight, ten thousand, that's with the initial.
Is the renovation out older than? Twenty years?
I think it's, oh yeah, seventeen, seventeen years or so.
The, the follow-on question, I think, would be around what maintenance has been undertaken on these buildings and specifically these boilers. But from where I sit, you know, we could sit and throw barbs and look backwards and say, you know, we're not sure if you've ever maintained them or not, or what the status has been, or if it's been satisfactory maintenance, I don't know. But my problem would be us sending students into a school where they're still wearing hats and gloves and mittens and coats in order to learn. And I know it's optimistic that the building itself down there is, is kicking around at seventy degrees. I know for a fact it's not, so, uh, I would like to see that get fixed. Fort Barton.
My question.
It's not.
It's fixed, isn't it?
You're saying no, you're saying yes, you're saying no, no.
We, no, we got, we got, we got significant heat coming out.
Well, the doctor said Johnny is saying it's fixed.
Temperature rates need to be between sixty-five and seventy degrees on a daily basis every day. Is it perfect? No, what, Mr. Andres explaining to you is that we've had people come in, I see mechanical and say, you're at this thing, but there's still air in the system, there's still other repairs that we recommend you do. But every day that building's between sixty-five and seventy. We don't send kids into a cold building.
So it's not a hundred percent fixed, but it's fixed, correct.
And another ten grand will fix it? You think, would be the cap, eight to ten grand?
Yeah, they're gonna provide reports, we can, I can bring back those reports when I get them.
When did you get the forty-two thousand though?
That's what we've already spent, that's part of the.
But where did, what money did you use for that?
That's part of the projected deficit, that's in our general fund, we've already spent.
Okay, so you need that money back?
Yes.
In order to fix your deficit? Because you used that money for capital? Really?
Yeah.
Yes?
Correct.
So, so you use, well, Ed, I, I'm not criticizing, but you definitely had to. So I think, I think that's what John is saying, give you back the forty-two.
Correct.
That's what John, so that you can put that.
And then, and then, and then add, and then add the dollars to actually finish the project. Because, again, we need, we need to have stable heating conditions.
And, and the, the January sixteen report, we have, you said the net effect, but it's like the forty thousand, that's good, that's gonna drop down to almost zero at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's more savings there.
Correct. Yes.
If you cut out the thirty thousand and the number eight, the ten thousand.
Right.
So you're dropping even lower on, on shows.
Most of these projects are reimbursable at thirty-five percent.
But, but remember, the reimbursements come in to a fund that has to pay off the balance of the casino fund because we had to cover the other stuff. And then those dollars can only be reallocated to the school system.
Yes.
I, I get it.
Yeah.
But, so, if, not that the forty-two thousand's gonna make a small help to the deficit, but you used operating for capital and we've been very specific that if you need capital, we give you capital and not to use operating. So I think this is fair to give you the forty-two.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And I feel that that's a safety too.
Correct.
For the kids. So yes, so that's.
So we're, we think ten thousand dollars more on top of, what's the forty-two that's already been spent?
Yeah.
We'll get Fort Barton squared away and then the twenty thousand for the high school.
Can't we just get the numbers from them and then approve it at the next meeting?
I was just gonna say, Mr. President.
Why are we guessing?
The actual estimates or the actual costs.
Just get the estimates and then we approve at the next meeting, it's not, it's an ongoing repair.
We're in the middle of winter, if they know it's gonna be eight to ten grand, wait another week and then another week to fix it, I mean, it's gonna be March before it's done. Let's just either add the ten grand or not add the ten grand here. I mean, if you come back with twenty-seven grand instead of eight grand, we're gonna tell you, sorry.
The, the difference is, we're talking reimbursing exact dollars for what's been spent, which I have no problem with. We can allocate an estimate to get the rest of it fixed.
Correct.
I would like the actual, like, whatever you spent, I mean, anything heat related, I'm fine with that. I mean, they're town buildings ultimately.
Mr. Solicitor?
So the process that we're gonna use by ordinance is that we have to pass a resolution with these numbers. So that'll be at the next meeting. If, if the interim, if you can get us an estimate, that'll probably satisfy that, we'll put it in the resolution. They'll pass the resolution with the actual numbers that you have. They can make a decision whether they fund it or not at that point. But this is just to give, be, if you guys are interested in moving forward, give me the opportunity to put it in a resolution, make it very clear that this is what we're spending, this is how we're allocating it, and any residuals goes back into that fund. That's what the resolution has.
Specifically for the Fort Barton picture, not the stuff that's.
Any of these items.
Any of these items, it'll be, it'll be itemized on the resolution, just like, oh, you, sorry, you weren't here last time. But have we done it in the past?
So, and then the, the other piece that I was gonna suggest, um, obviously, I don't think it's a secret in the town that you're running deficit today, that means there's gonna be budget cuts next year. I would like to see, as it relates to the touch views, you know, I'd like to know how many classrooms we're operating before we buy touch views for them. And given that we're coming into the budget item, my suggestion would be that we stick that one on hold. Because again, that, maybe it's, maybe it's two forty-two, maybe it's a hundred and forty-two, I don't know.
Yeah, this was, uh, I'll, I'll talk to the IT director.
But we can hold that until we go.
I agree, and is there, can you do a formal survey of every teacher in town? And, and we want to know that they're actually gonna use them, right? If someone says, no, I'm not gonna use that, like, why are we gonna buy one for six grand or whatever they are?
This was the largest request we received in a couple cycles.
Every single teacher, a hundred percent of every teacher is gonna use it, they're gonna use it.
That's what they tell us.
That's what they tell us, it's coming from teachers.
And then have you gotten a quote on refurbished or resold ones? Because I was looking online last night and they have guarantees, warranties and they're a fraction of the price. So you maybe want to get a second quote and look at that, um, as a backup, just saying.
Just remember Blake too, this is thirty-five percent reimbursable too. So we're just gonna be careful, I don't know the Rides rules on.
Oh, the touch views are reimbursable too?
Educational.
Educational, yeah.
Right, but if, you know, the more you spend, you're still more money, right? If you get it down, you're still gonna get thirty-five percent of that new number.
So essentially what we'd be looking for here from the council would be a motion to approve and then insert the items that we want to approve pending the prepared resolution by the solicitor.
Correct.
So, and, and you can itemize those. I would just say, you know, between what's already been expended, roughly forty-two thousand plus the another thirty to finalize the heating systems, I say you round it to a hundred and we're gonna get the balance back and get, and get, and get the heating system done. We could do it in the same resolution because ultimately we're gonna have to take that finalized resolution and approve it at the next council meeting. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so John, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, okay, there's a lot here, so bear with me.
You go slow because I'm, guys gotta prepare this, so.
Ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Number one, that's the doors. Number two, that's the wiring and cable.
In the amount stated on the.
I will, okay, so number one.
No, no, I just want to ask you, in the amount stated, right?
Correct, in the amount stated, a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for the doors, number one.
Yep.
Number two, wiring and cable in the amount stated, twenty thousand dollars with a fifty percent reimbursement. Number three, THS athletic field repairs, thirteen thousand dollars in the amount stated. Number four, I'd like to exclude, uh, the thirty thousand dollars electricity for the lower fields. Number five, I'd like to exclude. Number six, I'd like to approve, uh, with what the counselor said, we'd like to go with option number two, correct? With the ten thousand, six hundred dollar savings, two, three and four.
Nine, seven, seven, nine, seven, seven, nine, five.
Nine, seven, seven, nine, five. As the option for that one? Number seven, replace bathroom boys partitions, thirty-five thousand dollars in the amount stated. Number eight has been removed by the school department. Additional ones are the roof, uh, I don't know, is there a number on that one?
Eighty-three, forty.
Eighty-three, forty.
Eighty-three, forty, eighty-three hundred dollars. The amount stated.
Hold on, hold on, is that number?
Uh, it's eight thousand, three hundred and forty dollars.
Eight thousand, three hundred and forty dollars.
Oh, inspection, okay.
And what's the next one, twenty thousand dollars for the compressor? The roof, I'm sorry, the roof?
Can I, can I, can I give you some language on that one?
Yep.
So.
Thank you.
My suggestion, if you're opening the amendment, would be a hundred thousand dollars for the capital expenditures already expended by the school committee for the heat at Bo, at any of the schools that they've done the heat work on, plus twenty thousand, which includes the twenty thousand for the THS and the, and ten thousand approximately for Fort Barton to fix the heating issue.
Does anyone add in this up?
A hundred thousand for roof and heating.
No, a hundred thousand for heating. Knowing that whatever is not expended is coming straight back and we will reallocate that.
I put it as like district school heating.
Yeah, and, and all invoices, not only does Denise get to fund, but we'll be providing those as well, obviously.
Okay, so the eighty-three, forty was the roof, the hundred thousand was the compressor and the heat at both, the, all schools. Fort Barton, high school.
Total of a hundred thousand.
Total of a hundred thousand, yeah.
Hundred thousands to resolve what's already been spent and.
The forty-two thousand dollars plus the other.
Yeah, additional hundred total.
Is anyone adding this up?
Want me to repeat that?
I'm just, I'm curious on how much this is.
Four, four thirty-seven, one, three, five.
Total?
That's the, oh, I'm sorry, minus, uh, it'd be four oh seven, one, three, five because Counselor Hayden did not want to include number four.
Correct.
So that's, that's the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. I'm gonna make a motion to amend to include the thirty thousand from number four for the lower fields, knowing that we are going to leverage our DPW team and that number's gonna be significantly lower.
I'll be honest with you, John, there's a, there's a whole plan in place. I don't think we need the public works.
We don't need to spend the money. It's gonna get done, it's gonna get done for free.
It's gonna, it's gonna get done.
So if there's no second, then, okay, perfect. So motion made and seconded on, uh, what was, what did I just say, four oh seven? One, three, five. Any, any further discussion? You'll, we'll send you a copy of the resolution, the draft resolution, so you know what it's for. Any further discussion? Okay, uh, hearing not all in favor? Unanimous.
Let's go, Tigers, appreciate your time.
That was exhausting. All right, uh, DPW Director. DPW Director, discussion of possible vote to extend the contract for pay-as-you-throw trash bags with, trash bags with waste zero?
Pardon me, Mr. President, there's another section of that, are you gonna hold that to revisit later or you just want to kill that item on the agenda? Municipal's on there as well.
Oh, no, my apologies, let's go back to municipal. Well, we do have some municipal requests in there, so.
And also to set the date for the actual meeting.
Correct, thank you, Mr. Administrator.
What would we do without you?
All right. Mr. Administrator, nine D two.
Thank you, Mr. President.
If you would be so kind.
So this one is to, so since I've been your interim administrator, we've done some assessments of the current infrastructure for IT. So this request includes $50,000 to upgrade the computer workstations at Town Hall, which would be approximately 20 workstations. They'd all be universal, they'd be all, and all, if not most of these requests, we'd be coming off the master price agreement. So we'd be doing the same thing that we've done in other town departments, i.e. the police department, where we're working with our IT consultant to make sure that every single workstation in the Town Hall is universal and is also upgraded and brought up to at least the best standards. I know I've been speaking with the town clerk and we've been doing some cyber assessments, given her responsibilities when it comes to the voting. I won't get into it publicly about some of the potential infrastructure and cyber threats that currently exist, but I can tell you that we need to address them now, which is what this allocation is for. Is there any questions about the $50,000?
No.
The second one is the $10,000 for technology upgrades in the administrator's office and the council chambers. I would like to put a smart screen, or basically a smart TV, into the administrator's office so we can conduct Zoom meetings. Currently, there is no computer in the administrator's office. I'm actually using my personal computer to conduct the town's business, so I'd like to put a workstation and some technology in there. Also, out in the council chambers, I know there've been complaints from not only the public, but council members, both current and past, about the audio. I'd like to put some sound or better acoustics in the council chambers and also put some technology, as far as, as tonight, we are going to be looking at the easels, as aesthetic and historic as they are, a smart TV costs about $800. So we could Bluetooth stream those presentations, so both you and the public could look at them. So that $10,000 would be working into not only the administrator's office and the council chambers. And then the last one, for the $20,000 for the upgrade or replacement of office furniture. We do have an allocation that was previously approved by the council for chairs and a, and a desk for the council. There, we are in woeful need of chairs for the members and the employees of Town Hall. So we could not utilize that allocation, because that is specific to you and the council chambers and the council seats here. So it would be, that $20,000 is to utilize, to buy chairs for not only the town offices, but also desks as well to support all the computer workstations that we plan to buy.
And that's $80,000 from the casino money.
That's correct.
All this is from casino?
Yes.
So this would be.
Gaming.
Yep, from the gaming. So where we sit after what was just approved for the schools, we're at a balance of $2,939,985 for what we can still allocate. So do we have a motion from the council? Councilor DiMares.
I make a motion, are you ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
To allocate $50,000 to upgrade outdated computer workshop stations at Town Hall and purchase Surface Pros and improve network infrastructure. $10,000 for technology upgrades for the administration, administrator's office and council chambers. 20,000 upgrade or replace office furniture for Town Hall offices.
Second. And that motion, Mr. Solicitor, was pending the preparation of your resolution.
Thank you. So it's gonna be one resolution?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion? Motion made and seconded, all in favor? All right, unanimous. Now we need to schedule.
I would, speaking with the department heads, Mr. President, potentially 30 days at a minimum, because I'm still getting requests in as we speak. I got some requests in for capital, so I'd wanna give the department heads kind of a drop dead date, that they would have to have any potential requests into the administrator's office prior to setting that date.
Mr. Solicitor.
Just a point of clarification. So the reason why we're doing this now is because, if you recall, we had some unallocated opera funds that we switched around, that we had previously used casino money, because we had to beat that 1231 deadline. But technically, under our ordinance, we're supposed to be making these allocations after the budget is done, and then we have a capital meeting and we fill in the capital after the fact. So, and I know that you have been very supportive of the schools when they come up with public safety issues or safety issues with the schools. But, so, you know, the way we're doing it now is a little unorthodox, because of the fact that we had to offset APRA and spend APRA. But generally, we do this in the fall, once the budget is approved, just, just to clarify.
And, and for everybody else here, the monies that we're spending down is last, not this, last fiscal year, so FY '24.
It's actually more than that.
And it's, and there's some remainder from '23, '22, and '21 that's still needed to be allocated.
And it's totally up to the council, but it's, if you do this as we go along, we'll be doing this all year. Like, the idea was for the departments to prioritize, after the budget is done, what you need for capital, we get it done in one shot. They have a whole year to spend it and get the stuff, so. I'm just, just reminding you, that's how, that's what, that's how the ordinance reads, that's what was intended when we passed the ordinance.
Thank you. So the, this would be to continue the expenditures for FY '24, which should've already been done by the prior council, but were not because of the opera monies.
Correct.
Okay. And so, Mister Administrator, you'd like 30 days out?
Please, sir.
So are we in an agreement, we'll just stick this on the March, the first meeting in March agenda? Okay. Does that work, Mister Administrator?
Thank you, Mister President.
All right, thank you. All right. Uh, we don't need to vote on that part, but, okay. So, uh, next item is the DPW Director, discussion impossible vote to extend the contract for pay-as-you-throw trash bags with waste zero, Mister Director. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, thank you. We would like to continue our relationship with waste zero with the pay-as-you-throw bags. And if there's any questions, happy to answer them.
Any members of the council, Councilor Hayden?
Is it accurate that there's a 90-day-out clause?
Yes.
Okay. So if we were to move forward with the other suggested option for mega disposal with the barrels, we could get out of the contract with the bags with 90 days' notice?
Well, and how I'd answer that, Blake, is if we get out of the uniform bag program.
Correct.
So for instance, if you were to keep, if you were to get the cots but keep the bags, you couldn't get out of it with waste zero, you'd have to get rid of the bag program. You can't switch to another vendor, just.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other counselors' questions? Mister Director, we believe that there's still the, the most viable option at this point?
I do, yes.
Okay. With that, any counselors like to make a motion? Anybody? A motion? No? I'll make a motion, then.
Unpopular program in town.
Apparently. Knowing full well that this is going, where our objective is to discontinue this, I would make a motion to extend the contract for the pay-as-you-throw trash bags with waste zero incorporated. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded, Counselor, you have discussion?
Yeah, as long as we have that 90-day buyout, right, that's.
It's in the contract.
It's in there. I don't have the contract in front of me, but.
Yes.
90-day clause in there.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
14C, municipality may terminate this agreement at any time upon 90 days' written notice if the town eliminates its uniform bag program for any reason.
All right, thank you. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Opposed?
I'm gonna abstain from that one.
Abstention, all right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Director. All right, next item, just for those watching at home, this is the request of the council, actually, right when we were elected, to have the planning board, given the sheer volume of proposed changes to zoning, special use permits, et cetera, et cetera, bring the council up to speed. There will be a public hearing at the February 10th meeting. So this gives anybody who's interested the opportunity to hear directly from the planning board, what the process is, thoughts, so on and so forth. And then we would actively encourage you to come and speak at the public hearing on February 10th.
The planning board's having a, the planning board's having a hearing on Saturday.
And the planning board is having their own hearing on Saturday.
Work session.
Work session. So more information to come. You gonna, you gonna blind me on this thing, or what?
We have a slideshow for you, but so you don't crink your heads around, we printed it out.
Thank you. For the, for the camera, am I in the way, or I'm good if I stay, if I sit right here, they can all see?
It's over you.
Okay. Man, I'm still gonna sneak out.
Wanna come over here?
Yeah, I totally get it. Yeah, yeah. All right, I'm just, I'm gonna scoot out of the way here. Chair of the planning board, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mister President. Good evening, everyone. I'm Tricia Hilton, I'm the chair of the planning board. With me this evening is Ashley Sweet, our consulting planner, and many of you know Todd Romano, who is our legal counsel at the planning board. Tonight, we are going to take you through the proposed amendments to the Tiverton zoning ordinance. This is kind of the second phase of a very multi-year project to bring our zoning code up to speed and also to address a number of changes that were made by the General Assembly last year regarding land use law that we must be in compliance with. So we're gonna give you a brief overview of what will be in front of you for determination at your meeting in February, and we encourage you to ask questions. As the council president mentioned, in addition to this overview tonight, the planning board is having its own workshop on Saturday, which will allow residents and citizens of the community who want to come see this presentation, but also ask questions, whether they're general questions or even questions about their own individual properties, to try and, and get as much information out there as possible. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ashley, and we'll go through this and then encourage you to ask any questions you might have.
And if I can just add for the council, just so we keep this moving along, let's jot our questions down, we'll ask them at the end. Being cognizant of time.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. So just to give you an idea of what we're gonna cover, we're gonna give you a very brief overview, which Tricia already sort of started, explain the changes to the future land use map and the zoning map, and then go article by article over the amendments with you. These are mostly in order numerically, but there, there is, we do wanna go back to Article 4 at the end, so it's mostly in order. And what we've done to keep you organized is on each slide are the page numbers for the actual document in front of you, so that you can flip to that section when we're going through that. As Tricia said, this is a second set of zoning amendments from two different efforts. One is a response to legislative amendments from the 2023 General Assembly session, and the second effort is a holistic review of the Tiverton zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations, which have not been reviewed in their entirety in many years, and so it's been a, a patchwork over the years, and we're working to get everything consistent and remove internal conflicts and also make sure that language that's been in there, that, you know, over the years, didn't necessarily get updated to reflect state laws, also taken care of. These efforts are supported by the planning department staff and legal counsel. So included in what you're going to be reviewing, or what will be in front of you at the public hearing, is a change to the future land use map and the zoning map. The future land use map is a visual depiction of the community's desires for future development. That's included in your comprehensive plan. The zoning map, which is what depicts the actual zoning districts that are in place in the town, has to be consistent with that future land use map. So when you make an amendment to one, you have to amend the other, unless the future land use map had been amended previously as part of a comprehensive plan update or amendment, and then you have 18 months to come into conformance with your zoning. Articles 1, 2, and 3 are mostly housekeeping issues. Article 1 starts on page 3, it essentially exempts the town from the zoning ordinance for government functions, which is a typical, you know, inclusion in most zoning ordinances. We've given you an example here, which would be a recycling center. Article 2 is the definition section, it starts on page 4 and runs through page 22. It is a long list of definitions of terms that are included in the zoning ordinance, and that's been amended significantly to update definitions, to add new definitions. There was a lot of, there was a lot of uses in the use table itself that were not specifically defined, which leaves those up for interpretation, and so we tried to make sure that any of the uses that were subjective enough that they could apply to multiple different types of uses were defined in such a way, so we would reduce that ambiguity, avoiding multiple interpretations of the same term. Article 3 updates the list of the, of zones that are included in the town, and in that section, we've added, we've split that waterfront zone into 1 and 2, and we'll talk more about that, but we've also taken the Form-based Code language that was previously in a separate but attached document to the zoning ordinance and rolled that into the zoning ordinance itself, and that is on pages 23 through 25. Article 4 is the district use regulations, that's an inset between pages 25 and 26, it's actually numbered as 1 through 26, that's the use table itself. This is where we've amended the document to split that waterfront zone, which we wanna cover in more detail with you towards the end of the presentation. As I said, it adds the three Form-Based Code districts, the traditional main street, pedestrian-friendly, and the neighborhood business zone to the use table. They used to be contained within an appended but separate use table, now it's all in one place, so it's easy for people to tell what's permitted and what's not permitted, when they, they can go to one place to find that information. There have been additions and updates and removal of some uses, and that also ties back to that list of definitions that we updated. This up, this, the district use table itself has been updated and identifies uses that are permitted by right, permitted by special use permit, or not allowed or prohibited within the town, and it directly ties performance standards and special use permits. There's, we're gonna cover that section in terms of the text that goes along with those, but this is where it's determined whether there's a special use permit, specific and objective criteria, or whether there are certain performance standards tied to a specific Article 5 is, adds the dimensions for the proposed waterfront zones and for the Form-Based Code districts, it's brought into the zoning ordinance. It clarifies existing language. There was, there was language in there now that talks about multiple uses on commercial lots, and that language was clarified, it was a little ambiguous. There was, there is a new-ish definition to building height. We've added an entire section that clarifies how that is measured and makes it in conformance with state law and essentially limits the combined height of the building and the flood elevation height to keep buildings at the standard 35 feet. Without that, we, we, the height limit wasn't effective, so we needed to change it to mimic state law. This is Article 6 and 7. Article 6 establishes performance standards for permitted uses. Some of these were previously only allowed by special use permit, and instead of make, instead of keeping them as special use permit allowances, we made them permitted uses, but created a set of performance standards that the specific use had to, had to adhere to. And then Article 7 is a, is a, there's language in there that prevents substandard lots with the passage of the R120 district from being merged due to being substandard in size, so that date needs to get updated. So Article 16 is special use permits. There was, as we discussed briefly, there was a new law that was adopted by the General Assembly, and this, this state language said that any use that is designated as a special use permit has to have specific and objective criteria associated with that use. And this is something that I would venture to say every town has struggled with in the state. Previously, when you had a special use permit, there were, you could be allowed, there was some subjectivity there, there was the ability to evaluate it against, you know, objectives or subjective criteria, and it included consistency with the comprehensive plan. These uses were evaluated on a case-by-case basis, so the, you know, the drive-through use in one place wasn't looked at as the drive-through use in the same, in the, in a different place in town, it was context sensitive, and the zoning board previously was approving these, had, had the ability to come up with. the ability to come up with standards and certain requirements based on specific context of the use where it was located, which equated to the local board having some latitude there and abutters having, standing to object to uses. The change has essentially created a circumstance where that subjectivity has been severely restricted, and every special use permit use has to have this set of specific and objective criteria, and once those are set for a use, that's it. So, the drive-through in one place gets the same standards as the drive-through in another place, even though the context might require different things. Because you have to say what the specific and objective criteria are for every drive-through, you can't be context-sensitive anymore. And so, this has been a really heavy lift, and communities have struggled, I would say, significantly with this, because you can't think of every circumstance under the sun that you would want to regulate a drive-through. There is going to be specific things that happen in specific locations that are going to be very unique to that instance, but because you have to have standardized, specific and objective criteria, you can't do that, you can't really do that anymore. So, this has been an exercise in trying to figure out, you know, what are the specific and objective criteria that we could think of under every circumstance that we can, you know, come up with? And we're not going to get them all, because you can't possibly do that. That has resulted in backing away from special use permits to some degree, because I think the general feeling is that they've, they've lost some of their effectiveness. And one of the things that Tiverton chose to do was to move towards performance standards for permitted uses, instead of getting boxed in to specific and objective criteria and not being able to be context-sensitive. The board has, as I said, lost their latitude, and abutters have, have lost their standing to object. So, as I said, we've reduced the number of special use permits required overall. When this was initially passed into law, we only had about six months to put this, as well as a lot of other language, in place, and one of the approaches was to just say all the special use permits for, for now, until we can come up with all of those specific and objective criteria are not permitted. As you can see at the bottom, the number of special use permits that were previously in the ordinance was 90. We have whittled that down to 21. Some of those uses were converted over to permitted uses. We've added specific definitions for what those uses are to narrow the scope of how those uses are, are used, and to give those uses performance standards that each, that the use has to achieve. By making it a permitted use with the performance standards, we think we have, we, we think we have more control, actually, than if you were to designate it as a special use permit.
Let me interrupt for one second.
Sure.
It's, we didn't know what to do with the specific and objective criteria, and whether anyone would have any latitude to even ask for variance from those. Mike and I talked about it, I talked to other solicitors about it, and it was our interpretation that you could not vary any of the specific, specific and objective criteria, that somebody would have to then get a use variance. So, what we, that's why, one of the reasons we went to the performance standards, in my opinion at least, that you can get a dimensional or use variance from these performance standards. So, a performance standard that says you have to have a fence, right? If it's not context-specific, as Ashley was talking about, the applicant can ask for that requirement to be varied.
To give you-
It's nuanced, I know, but it's what we had to do to give some latitude.
And the, the bigger concern was that we would continue to assign special use permits to the uses that had them before. Specific and objective, we don't know exactly what that means, but it had, we're under the assumption that it has to be something that's measurable, that if you read it and I read it, we get the same thing out of it. Like, I know that I have to check the box, that I have to have a 25-foot landscape buffer. We can't use language anymore that says that you buffer adequately to protect the neighborhood, because what I think that achieves and what you think that achieves could be two different things. So, to be specific and objective, you have to say 20 feet, and if somebody comes in and says, "I can't achieve 20 feet, I can only achieve 15," but it would be okay, under the solicitor's interpretation that you can't vary that, they can't have a special use permit. And we didn't want to create that circumstance, because you'd end up, eventually, you'd end up in a situation where the town wanted the use, the, the property owner wanted the use, and we were fighting over five feet, and we can't relieve them of that. So, we didn't want to create that dynamic, so we moved towards the performance standards instead, feeling like we had more control over performance standards than specific and objective criteria. So, we're going to, we want to bring you back to Article 4, which is the, the actual use table, and this is where the waterfront zoning is really, where it's waterfront 1 and waterfront 2 are really shown, and where you can see what's allowed and not allowed in each of those districts. And the purpose behind doing this was to, you know, increase the commercial tax base, the viability of the commercial tax base, but protect the value of residential property, recognizing that, you know, all, virtually all of the land in Tiverton that is zoned anything other than residential abuts residential at some point. And so, we're very, you know, we're sensitive of that and have tried to better utilize the waterfront as an asset while being very cognizant of adjacent residential properties. It's also something that's called out in your comprehensive plan, which I've given you a quote here, that, that the plan calls for exploring the possibility of multiple waterfront zones to ensure a compatible mix of commercial and residential uses. So, the approach here that we took was to separate the waterfront into two district, two zones. You now have one single waterfront zone. We also added what we felt were appropriate commercial uses that are currently not permitted in your current one waterfront zone. So, if, some important things to, to take away for the change to the waterfront zone is that all the properties that are in these zones remain subject to CRMC and DEM regulations. That doesn't change. They're also subject to the general zoning ordinance in terms of parking and lighting. They're, you know, your noise ordinance still applies. All the, the regular, you know, safe, safety guards that are in place stay in place with this split of the waterfront zoning. The, it includes a new height limit, as, as we discussed earlier, which is the way you measure height related to state law, you know, to preserve those water views, to preserve the existing residential properties, and that the uses that are there now will, are allowed to remain. They're, they're grandfathered in, they're allowed to legally continue and operate, and will not be, they'll, they'll be, you know, there's really no other repercussion other than they are, become non-conforming, but they're grandfathered, they stay operating, and that does not change. So, we just wanted to draw to your attention, you know, some of the reasons why we worked on this. There were 18, in the current waterfront zone, there were 18 uses that were permitted. 17 of those required a special use permit. A church or a place of worship was the only one that did not require a, a special use permit in that zone, which is not very business-friendly. The residential homes that are in that zone are non-conforming. There are many that are residentially used, but single-family and two-family and multifamily are not permitted uses. There was an issue with the height limit, and we needed to make sure that we amended that in order to protect those water views and the property values of the adjacent residential properties. And the waterfront district wasn't really context-sensitive. It was, everything that was, that you see in that map in blue was all the same types of uses, either permitted, not permitted, or by special use permit, and they're pretty different areas and deserve some specificity and some context-sensitive attention. So, we created these two different waterfront zones, waterfront 1 and waterfront 2, and we tried to address the non-conforming status of residential properties wherever we could. It wasn't always possible, but in every instance that it was, we, we attempted to do that. So, the proposed waterfront 1 zone would essentially be this area in blue that is currently zoned waterfront now. It's adjacent, it's the area of and adjacent to the tank farm. It is amid to higher intensity of commercial uses that are essentially what's currently allowed, and with the addition of some added commercial type of uses. It's already zoned as waterfront. It's the same footprint. We did not change. We didn't add parcels or take parcels away from this area. This is the existing footprint of your waterfront zone in this location, and it's, it just changes from waterfront to waterfront 1. There are now 20 uses that'll be permitted by right and five uses that will require a special use permit. These are a mix of service, retail, commercial, and marine-related uses, and there is an option to allow for residential on upper floors if there's commercial on the lower The waterfront 2 zone, we looked at this as kind of creating areas of opportunity for commercial development with, with a minimal impact on the adjacent residential neighborhoods. These are lower-impact service, retail, commercial, and marine-related uses that are permitted in this district. There are seven existing non-conforming commercial lots that we're moving from residential to waterfront 2. It incorporates some lots that are currently zoned as general commercial in the Stonebridge and Volga Marsh area into, into waterfront 2. So, we're creating essentially a unified and simplified business zone there, where now you have circumstances where things that are allowed are not allowed across the street, but we've created this into one, now it's one zoning district. There are 19 by right permitted uses in this district in the waterfront 2, and three uses that require a special use permit. The same option for mixed use with residential on upper floors exists, and we took the pre-existing cottage colonies, which is the Riverside Drive and Main Road area, from being zoned as waterfront to a residential zoning designation, which takes them out of being non-conforming. They are fully developed lots as residential uses. They are currently in a non-residential zone. All of these lots that we moved from that, from waterfront into the residential zone have pretty severe parking limitations and would make their use as non-residential either problematic or impossible. And as I said, the current residential use is non-conforming, so now they become conforming by use in a residential zone. So, we're going to take you through, I think it's six areas, and just show you a comparison of what exists now and what is being proposed. This is, excuse me, the villages at Mount Hope Bay. This is currently zoned waterfront, and this would be proposed to be zoned waterfront 2. There is no change to the footprint of the designation for that zoning district. It just applies a waterfront 2 designation instead of the current waterfront. Area 2 is the Hicks property. It's currently zoned R-30, and this is approximately 500 feet from the water inland, is proposed as a W-2, so that zoning would split this lot at about 500 feet in.
So, on this particular lot, probably the worst-kept secret in Tiverton is that the Tiverton Open Space Commission, along with the Tiverton Land Trust, has been and continues in negotiation with the family that owns this property. I will tell you that collectively, everyone at all of our meetings, at the zoning update committee meeting, at the planning board meeting, has expressed their desire and their hope that, that those negotiations are fruitful. In the event that that happens, obviously, that particular parcel would, or whatever portion thereof, if there were an agreement to be reached, would become zoned open space, and it wouldn't be. And we have discussed this multiple times publicly. We have been in contact with Brian James, head of the Open Space Commission, but the feeling is, so that people understand why, that's a very large parcel. And while it's everybody's most fervent hope, at least among the citizens that, that we've discussed this with, and that that, those negotiations are fruitful, if for some reason they're not, that is a, a portion of waterfront that's undeveloped, that has the opportunity for some commercial development on it compared to the alternative, which would be to do a very significant housing development. And so, you would, you would be taking away a, a piece that you potentially could use for commercial development for housing. But again, the, the, the real desire is that, you know, if these negotiations work out, that that parcel would then, or whatever portion would become open space and would not be part of the waterfront going forward.
What would it be? W-1 or, or W-2? That would be-
O-S, open space.
No, no, no. Two.
It's proposed as two.
It's proposed for two.
Thank you.
So, area 3 is adjacent to the Connet River Bridge, which is currently zoned waterfront as shown on the left. This adds two commercial parcels that are currently zoned residential. Those are outlined in red. You can see on the left, they're, they're zoned as residential. On the right, as proposed, they would be in the waterfront 2. It includes the former Chase Building and several other DEM lots in this area, and the cottage lots would be moved, and those are outlined in purple, would be moved over to a residential zoning designation. Area 4 is Riverside Drive. This is currently zoned waterfront, the former Quality Yacht Yard and the Tiverton Yacht Club. These, this cottage area would be moved over to residential, again, moving those residentially-developed lots into a residential zone and making those conforming uses. Area 5 is Stonebridge. This is currently zoned waterfront on the west side and general, general commercial across the street on the east side. As I kind of alluded to, there are different permitted uses directly across the street from each other, so it feels a little disjointed. This creates one cohesive business area, hopefully providing an opportunity for more village-style development, and also to explore some additional parking options in the area. Area 6 is Volga Marsh and Main Road. This is a very kind of small area of, of commercial or waterfront 2 development. There's currently three lots that are commercially used, and they're zoned residential, and then there's one commercial lot that's zoned general commercial, and one lot that's currently undeveloped that's also zoned as general commercial. Again, bringing these into the same zoning district, allowing the same uses, and also removing some non-conformity by use. So, those would all be brought in as waterfront 2. So, the planning board did want to just bring this to your attention. There are some things that have been discussed, and some, it's, you know, there's a, there's a lot of language changes and a lot of work that's gone into this, and we have come across a couple of things that we'd like to bring to your attention, that we'd like to propose as amendments as part of your public hearing on February 10th, and thought it would be a good opportunity to- to just bring these to your attention now. The commercial marina use, the planning board would like to add that to the use table and will bring you recommended language. They're going to discuss that on February 4th and vote on that. The amendment number two is that the use that's in the table as a packaged liquor store was inadvertently designated as not permitted, and we would like that to be changed to a permitted use in the W2 zone. Amendment number three is changing that date from the June 24th date to the date that these will be adopted. And then amendment number four is that we noticed that there should be a P for permitted use in section 10, which is in the use table, for retail establishments of up to 20,000 square feet. There's currently an N in there. That should be a P. And so we will bring you that specific requested amendment with specific language, but just wanted to bring those to your attention tonight. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so on number two is actually in the Village Commercial District, not the W2 District. I apologize, but you will...
He's telling me.
Number four is in Village Commercial. Number two is in waterfront.
So we're gonna bring you that language. The planning board will discuss that on February 4th and send that to you as a request. And that's all we have for you. I don't, if you wanna, there are questions?
All right, council, do you wanna flip the lights on, or do you think you're gonna need the projector again?
I, maybe. We have the GIS available if you have questions about, like, specific places, but...
Does anybody have any questions about specific locations, or can we put the projector away?
Don't know yet.
All right, we'll leave it down. It's just cozy in here with the lights off. All right, so any questions from the council?
Yeah, I have a few questions. I'll go first. It says here, the lots, the lots which are under consideration to have their designation on the future land use map changed include but may not be limited to. And then it lists all the plat and lot numbers, so...
Are you reading from the advertisement, Mr. Hayden?
9C.
Yes, that's the notice.
So I'm just curious. Obviously, it says but, may not be limited to. So is everything you're just presenting there only for those sections, or is it for the entire town?
It's only for the, it's only for the sections that you saw the highlight of. I think Todd will probably tell you that the may not be because you have some leeway at the hearing if you wanted to move a lot, like, you could. But the changes that we're proposing are only those lots that we showed you highlighted on the maps that you just saw.
Okay. And so that leaves me to my next question. Section 15, the prohibited uses, are those prohibited uses only for what's listed here? Or are those prohibited uses for the entire town?
The entire town.
Okay.
There's only one prohibited use being added.
Okay. How did we come up with the list of prohibited uses?
We approved that.
It's the, again, we are only adding one prohibited use to that list of a recycling center, so the other prohibited uses have been, I don't know how long they've been on that list.
A couple of months, well... Well, some of them have been on for years.
Forever, and then we added some...
The list has been amended over time. There were some additions last year to it, but a lot of those have been there for decades.
Anything that was a special use permit was automatically to satisfy the zoning piece, was made into a not a prohibited, or made into a prohibited use until such time as these all came back to us, but...
Just to clarify, we have section, Article 4, Section 15 is a list of specific uses prohibited town-wide, no discussion whatsoever.
Yep.
You then have Article 4 in the district use table, which may have an N, which means prohibited, really means not permitted, and you can get a use variance for those.
Is it a difference?
Yep.
So, so, let me try to get this right. If it's a prohibited use in the entire town, the zoning board or the planning board sitting in a unified development would not be able to grant a use variance if it's in section 15. If it's listed as an N in the use table, if they meet the criteria for use variance, which is very hard to make, if you show no beneficial use of the property, they may be able to permit that, change the N to a permitted use for that application only. So that's the importance of prohibited uses. You may disagree with prohibited use, that's a policy issue, but I'm just trying to show you what the legal distinction is. So prohibited, the zoning board or the planning board could never, ever grant a use variance for.
Understood. My question is, if one of these existed when this was passed, were they grandfathered in? If there was a loam stripping company that was already in place when this passed, they were able to operate? If there was a brewery, which we don't have unfortunately, but if there was, they would be able to continue to operate, right?
Correct.
Okay. If there was a campground, it would be able to continue to operate?
If there's a legally permitted campground, at the time that the prohibited list said or added that use, it would be able to continue as a legally existing non-conforming use.
So, thank you.
Yeah, it would be a legally permitted use at the time.
Yes. I would, to Councilor Hayden's point, though, some of the uses you may look at, like you said, a brewery, which is too bad that we don't have one. Until we, some, there are some uses that we are not allowing right now until we get a better handle on the water situation because they are very big water users, and until we have a better sense with our public water suppliers, as well as some groundwater work we're doing, things that use large, large amounts of water, we're holding off on because we're not sure we can support them yet. But they may be under consideration in the future.
Ice hockey rinks aren't on here, and they use a lot of water, right? So how is that one not put on here? But some of the other ones that, I mean, a brewery could be anything. It could be Anheuser-Busch. It could be a little microbrewery that uses 15 gallons of, you know, water. I'm just curious, like, where do we get the list of what businesses use an excess amount of water that they needed to go on here, is my question.
We looked at not only our zoning code, but some other zoning codes. I'll tell you, I don't remember seeing another zoning code where an ice hockey rink is listed as a use, but lots of other communities had various uses for things like breweries and distilleries and all of that. And we did do some research on things that are sort of generally fairly common and generally recognized as large water users, and we were surprised ourselves to find out how much water a brewery or distillery uses. We really were surprised about that.
Sure.
Golf courses, you know. So we took some of the ones that are fairly common in other zoning codes and said, you know, until we get a handle on the water situation, we're better off not putting these on for now.
Okay.
Those are all policy decisions that the council can change if they decide to. This is, these are just recommendations.
Sure, and then I have two other questions, and then I'll pass it over. Sorry, guys. From some research that I did, the new proposal is supposed to comply with the state land use, Title 45-22. Is that an accurate statement? I'm asking, I guess...
That's a broad statement. That's too broad.
Our comprehensive plan has been approved by the state. Changes we are recommending will comply with our comprehensive plan, or the comprehensive plan will be amended to allow these.
Got it, but it has been submitted to the state, it has been approved?
About eight years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, it's actually time for us to relook at that.
Okay, that was gonna be one of my next questions, so thanks, John. And then, the low-income development. There's Mount Hope, there's Connet Bay. Are we meeting and complying with the requirements on both of those?
It's not low income, it's low...
Low development, low impact, I'm sorry, not low income. I apologize. Lids, I was, so I'm just, does the plan meet both of the, you know, comply with the criteria for both of those?
Ashley, would you like to, I think some people are confusing low-impact development uses versus what low-impact development really is, and they're two entirely different things, but I'll ask Ashley to take that...
I would love some clarification on that.
Sure.
Because I don't understand it myself. Thank you.
So, low-impact development is a terminology from, used by DEM, and it typically relates to stormwater management. So when you, DEM gets involved in stormwater management when you disturb over an acre of land, so anything that's disturbing over an acre of land goes to DEM and has to be reviewed for stormwater treatment, and they have to approve your methodology for stormwater treatment. They will not let you not do low-impact design for your stormwater treatment, and the idea is that low-impact design improves water quality. Low-impact design is not about the development itself. It's not about the use, it's about how the site is designed and how you can improve water quality through site design. So things like imperious pavement that will allow water to infiltrate and get treated before it goes into where it's recharging, using rain gardens, using, you know, we're moving away from the standardized, like, trench and pipe method of, like, dumping our stormwater into a detention pond, and it's more about treating that stormwater and sending that water back in to recharge the groundwater. That's low-impact development in a very kind of oversimplified way. There is a plan for Mount Hope Bay that does talk about low-impact development. That plan is about measures that the state can take and the town can take in order to improve water quality for when property is developed and redeveloped, but it doesn't limit what you can do in terms of uses and your zoning. It simply reinforces that the town should be looking for ways to recharge, to treat stormwater before it reaches Mount Hope Bay so that we can improve water quality. But that's essentially low-impact development about water quality and stormwater treatment.
Thank you. That's all for me.
And I'll add that the town has done things, they've added to their regulations to comply with low-impact development. As I said, anything that's over an acre, the state reviews and push, and you have to do low-impact development for stormwater treatment. And we, and you can probably speak to this a little bit more, but we have had somebody kind of come in and do an assessment, and there are some next steps, and so the town is taking action and is doing things to move low-impact development forward and does, has incorporated that into their regulations so that nothing that we're proposing here would interfere with that effort or would be contradictory to the Mount Hope Bay low-impact development report that you were referring to.
Thank you.
So I would suggest, and obviously this is a lot to digest, but perhaps, you know, we as a council should, you have everything here listed, right, especially all of the proposed changes? So I would suggest that we spend the next couple of weeks just going through these, make some notes specifically on some questions we may have. I'm assuming that the planning board chair would be available for any questions in the interim.
No.
If that's, unless anybody has anything pressing they wanted to hit on.
I agree, there's a lot in here, and we gotta take it in bite-sized chunks.
So can I just make a question?
Go ahead.
So, we're having our public hearing on the 10th. To the extent that, in your review, you may have a proposed amendment, need a clarification, and one out, we cannot draft these on the fly. I can't be drafting amendments on February 10th. So, because it just doesn't work that way. This is a very important, very important code, right? So it has to be done correctly, and it's gonna be consistent, it's all gonna fit in together. So I would recommend that if you have any proposed changes or need clarifications, that you somehow contact Todd or myself, or Ashley, or the chair with ideas, and we can talk it through. I do have one question, but I see you have a question for me.
No, but I mean, that's like, you know, February 10th is only...
Well, true. You could continue the meeting on February 10th, but here's the problem. We have until February 24th, is it February 28th?
The end of the month.
The end of the month. Under state law, and I got, this is the clarification I need from the, under state law, we had to, the town got rid of all the special use permits and made it not permitted because if we didn't do that, then they were automatically granted as a matter of right. So you'll see, as Ashley pointed out, that they did have objective criteria for some uses that they kept as a special use permit. Some uses, and this is my question, because I look at this table, and I know you probably anticipated this question, because I know I spoke to Ashley and Todd about this, this table that's before us now reflects the fact that some of those special use permits were changed to not permitted. It doesn't show what used to be a special use permit is now not permitted. And I just gotta point this out because it's just glaring, because I spent the last 16 months hearing this. The gasoline filling stations used to be as a special use permit in the general commercial zone. If I look at this table, it's an N, which is currently, because you changed the special use permit to an N to have a specific, so we could adopt specific criteria. But if I was just looking at this, not having that history, I would have assumed that in the general commercial zone, gas stations were never permitted. That's not accurate, right? They were permitted under general commercial with a special use permit. So this code reflects the changes that, everything that was moved from a special use permit to an N. Correct, all right.
Do you have...
Yeah, we have an overlay of that to show what...
Do you have the original change before they were submitted, the special uses were changed to N? Because I think that would be helpful.
I do have the table with those prior, changes prior January 1st, 2024. It's not that easy to just match it up to today's table because we've added uses and removed some uses.
It's not a one-for-one anymore on the tables. They don't line up exactly.
How many do you think would have changed that, though? Like, how many of those would have...
I mean, we had 90, we only have 20 now, so...
Actually, it's more than that, though. There's 90 uses that somewhere in a zone had a special use permit, but some of those, there were multiple...
Multiple zones.
And I think, I asked Ed for a count, and it's in the 300s. We had 300 and something. If you added up all the zones, a special use permit.
An individual use might have a special use permit in multiple districts, so when you counted all of them, it was over 300.
It was 300 and something.
So this chart, though, reflects the changes that were made from S to N as a, when we made those changes.
Yeah, so that reflects what was, what was, everything was N, and it either came back as a special use permit, came back as permitted, or stayed an N.
And I'm just pointing out on behalf of my clients that that, I wanna make sure they understand that. This chart is kind of a good double chart because there are things that were changed...
Were already one move in.
Correct.
I'll be honest with you, Mike, I was looking at it saying, wow, there really hasn't been much change, and like, not understanding that.
That's why I'm pointing it out.
Thank you.
I don't think it's anything nefarious about it. I'm not suggesting the planning board, but I just want you to understand it.
No, they had to do it.
We had to do it that way.
Madam Clerk, or perhaps you have this, but this is going back, what? Last council, do we have the backup, the original backup from that, which was presented to us where everything was marked special use and then crossed out an N next to it? Because if we have that, I think if that could be distributed to the council, that would be helpful in doing that comparison if Mr. Ramona does not have...
Right. The tricky thing, the one tricky thing...
I see that on some of these, on these charts, some of them have a line through it. I don't even know what that represents, like, a line through the P and then it says no.
Yeah, that means that it was permitted and now it's not...
Right, so some of it, some things are reflected that way, I guess.
There are, it's...
But that's based on their deliberations.
Right.
So some stuff that was not a special use permit, some stuff that was permitted, the planning board also looked at that, those items, and may have said, okay, not permitted here now.
Let me say it like this. On January 1st, 2024, your district use table, all those S's became N's, and that's the use table that we amended, that you see before you today.
So if it was a P and it went to an N, then through this process, they decided to remove something that was permitted by right and make it a not permitted?
We can get you what was special use prior to 2024.
We can do that, as long as you recognize that the uses aren't gonna match up anymore because we've changed a lot of the uses.
There's definitely some definition changes.
And we got rid of some uses that, like, didn't even make any sense, like, things like satellite, like, why do we, like...
Well, actually, that's one of the items that I did call out because, you know, under three meters in size, obviously Starlink is a thing, so if for some reason Starlink becomes more affordable than Cox Cable, you've essentially made it so no one in this town can have that for internet. Because that satellite dish is, it is a satellite internet, so that's one of the items that I called out, like, almost immediately, and...
Was that special use permit before?
Probably was. It was a use, I think we struck it as a use.
We struck it, but we, when we strike it as a use, it means we're not regulating it anymore. So we basically said, why are we trying to regulate people's satellite dishes? This is ridiculous. So if the whole use is crossed off, we... So, if the whole use is crossed off, we basically said, this doesn't belong in zoning, like, this isn't in our purview.
Well, I want to clarify another change to state law. The general rule used to be that if it wasn't in your use table, then it's not permitted in your town. That doesn't stand anymore. The state law changed so that now, if it's not in your use table, the individual looking for that use can petition, I think we picked the zoning board...
Correct.
...to find another similar use in the table that is allowed by special use permit to apply to that use. So, just because it's not in your table anymore does not mean that it's automatically not permitted.
Okay.
Unless it's on a prohibited list.
Unless it's on a prohibited list.
It gets very confusing.
There's some comments for that, too, but we'll deal with that at the public hearing. Or I'll deal with that with you in advance.
Mr. President, that was my question. So, we're more in line with state law now than we ever were.
Well, there were four to click.
We're getting there.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, there were significant changes to the state law regarding zoning and land use. And so, this, the last piece of that is the special use permits and their specific and objective criteria, and getting that in place.
I'm sorry, make a point. So, to the extent that this council would want to make something that was a special use permit back to a special use permit, or whatever, the trick of that is that we have to have specific and objective criteria to meet it. So, that's a...
Because the repercussion is that if you don't, then it's permitted.
Permit it. So, to the extent that we, if you guys want to do that, we need to, that's why I'm asking this in advance.
And I'll tell you from experience, it's not that easy of an exercise to come up with those specific and objective criteria, so...
Well, good thing we only have till the end of February.
If you come up with criteria, I'm sorry, Trish, if you come up with criteria, you can designate those as performance standards, which don't have to be as specific and which can be varied through a process.
And to be clear, let's say we go through, we pull the trigger on, let's say there's no changes to what you have proposed, and six weeks later, all of us get a call from 1,600 constituents, very upset that they're not allowed to do something. We can always re-advertise this and come back out and make some changes, correct?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
You can, at any point. One of the things, especially for, especially for the councilors who are new, part of the reason that this is so complicated is that Tiverton zoning code was desperately in need of an overhaul. I mean, it was decades old, and it was like the house that Jack built, where stuff just got added on, and it was...
Like Town Hall.
I mean, it was really, really in bad shape. And, you know, residents complained, prospective business owners complained, the planning board complained, nobody liked it. So, we undertook this massive project to overhaul the zoning code. And in the middle of that, the General Assembly, bless their heart, hit us with a staggering amount of zoning changes in a very short period of time to come into compliance. So, unfortunately, these two enormous projects intersected each other, and the timing for us could not have been any worse. It was really, really tough stuff. So, we realized that this is a lot at once, and we wouldn't have ever suggested doing it this way, but it's just, you know, we just got kind of hit with this tsunami from the General Assembly while we were in the middle of this overhaul, and that's where it's put us. It's been a lot of work, and I give a lot of thanks to Todd and Ashley and my fellow members of the Zoning Update Committee and the Planning Board for slogging through it. We realize it is a lot, and it's complicated. If we could have done it differently, we probably would have...
One final question, Madam Clerk. This backup that was presented to us, is this available on the town website, or can it be made available?
Go ahead, Todd.
So, the changes that were for January 1st, 2024, were, I believe, approved in December. So, the backup for all of that would be in the December meeting.
No, I mean this specific.
These are already...
Okay. So, perhaps we can get that out there, because I'm sure there are people at home going, I don't know what this is, but we'd encourage everybody also to take a look, and there are seven, well, six of us here, but seven of us total. So, if you do have questions, please, or concerns, please call one or all of us.
On the front page with an alert button with a link to all the changes.
So, very important, go to the town's website, look at this stuff.
And, as I stated before, the planning board is having a workshop for the public on Saturday, and I'm sure you guys have a lot of things to do this weekend, but if you want to come and hear questions, because that's really designed to be a question-and-answer session...
Will that be videotaped?
It's not.
I don't, it's a workshop. I don't think we have that, I don't think we have, we can try.
What time is it?
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM. Till we've answered everybody's questions is...
Sunday morning?
Saturday. I mean, but that is, that's meant to be a question-and-answer period, so if you have nothing better to do, it might be an informative exercise for you to be there, too.
So, if possible, Madam Clerk, could we see if they'd be able to record that?
Right here, we can ask.
Well, he's busy, he's recording currently.
I believe somebody else records, planning board.
Okay.
I'll have my new clerk check in.
Thank you.
These, it's a different, different video recorder.
All right. Any other questions from the council? If not, Madam Chair, Ashley, Solicitor Romano, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work, also.
All right, let's get rid of this chat screen. Hit the button, up she goes. Next item on here is discussion, review, and possible vote on amendments to the council governance policy amended 311, 2024, including amendments to a newly created section 7, other governance in town, of the town council by adding item D, town administrator application and review process, item E, legal council opinion slash request. You have the proposed changes in front of you, and I have some language I'd like to strike when the solicitor is prepared.
What is it, a motion to approve?
Oh, you motion to approve, and I'll amend it, if you'd like.
I'm sorry, I know you're remanding my language, so...
In real time.
That's all right.
Do you want a motion to approve?
Yeah, I don't know if you do that, and I'll make an amendment.
Are we doing this together, or what are we doing?
Do them together.
Go ahead.
So, I make a motion to approve amendment to the town council governance policy 7D and E.
Second.
All right, motion's been made in second. One piece, well, two pieces of discussion. So, on item E, this does not preclude any councilors from picking up the phone, calling our solicitor, asking him questions. This is solely for formal opinion requests, to have a new process, because ultimately, if we ask the solicitor to write a formal opinion, we're going to get billed for it. So, we'd like to try and contain legal bills as much as possible. And then with item D...
John, do we get billed on questions and...
No, 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 no.
It's part of the, it's part of the flat fee, so it's a flat, it's flat.
The questions are part of the flat fee.
Correct.
So, if you say, you know, hey, can I do this, like, it's just if you want something on Louis Brisboye official letterhead as a formal opinion, because in some instances, we may not need that, or, you know, maybe it's already coming, so...
Which is also part of the flat fee, by the way, too, but it's just, yeah.
All right, so, it's a lot of work for the solicitor. So, that was a request that he had made. And then on item D, hiring the town administrator, so my amendment would be to strike the last line and then amend the second-to-last line, requiring that we get two applicants, because if we only have one applicant that applies and only one moves forward, that would obviously be inconsistent.
Well, that would be an impossibility.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, but if the only one applies, and...
We just get that one.
You only get that one. You can't, they can't forward someone that they don't have.
That's my point.
No, but if that...
Yes, I will remove it.
So, that would be my amendment. So, strike the last line.
Last line or last sentence?
Last sentence, sorry. Last sentence, actually, last, last two. No, no, just amend the last, the last one from, after the interviews are completed, the personnel board shall recommend to the town council applicants...
What consideration?
Yeah, applicants with the S in parentheses.
Applicants, yeah.
So, you're going to remove the number?
Yep. So, I make that amendment in the form of a motion, I don't know if there's a second.
Sorry, we're striking down the last line all the same.
Second.
Yep.
That's a proposal. Is that, is that part of it as well? We're doing one at a time? In other words, we're doing one amendment at a time, or we're doing all?
All amendments. That's one full amendment.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure it out.
It's already tied, motion on the floor.
Yep, so, motion on the floor. Now, my motion is to amend, seconded by Counselor Camino. So, if there's no further discussion, the next order of business would be to vote on the amendment, and then to vote on the total amended motion.
John.
Counselor Perry.
The whole purpose of that is if they forward you one applicant, and the council doesn't approve that one applicant, you just go out to advertise again.
Correct.
That's all.
Yeah, this, my amendment would clear this up, so that it quantifies that the Personnel Board is the sole screening tool...
Correct.
...for all incoming applicants.
Right.
All right. Any further discussion? So, motion, or the vote is on the, my amended language, striking that last sentence and changing it to applicants with a parentheses around it. So, all in favor? Opposed? All right. So, now, the...
As amended.
As amended, so, all in favor? All right.
You opposed the amendment, but not the final.
No, I opposed everything. You raise your hand.
You raise your hand.
To oppose.
No, no, he said I.
The second one.
There's only one vote.
I oppose both.
Okay, thank you.
You got it?
I probably wasn't listening.
I think I raised my hand late, because I was opposing.
Interim Town Administrator, discussion and possible vote to give town clerk authority and control over the town council budget line item...
There was no changes F.
No changes F.
Thank you.
Line item 10206954, advertising ordinance for town advertising for Town Hall operational services to include open positions and citizen notifications without the need for prior town council approval.
Someone explain that to me.
So, basically, the clerk will have access to our advertising budget for those specified items, which would be advertising for Town Hall operational services and open positions and citizen notifications. So, we don't have to wait or call a special meeting to advertise for those items.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Did I accurately describe that, Mr. Solicitor?
Yes.
So, instead of her coming saying, can I advertise?
For an example, Counselor, like, we had the special meeting for the code enforcement and the DPW. So, this way, we wouldn't have to do that.
All right, I just didn't understand it, I'm sorry.
Okay. Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed?
Hang on one second.
Yep.
John, you all set?
I was wondering if you could also include RFPs.
Too late. Too late.
Next week.
We'll add it to the next one. All right. Discussion impossible vote regarding a potential ordinance amendment posting in public hearing regarding the number of Class A retail liquor licenses.
So...
Mr. Solicitor.
I gave you this opinion, this is just, this was from the clerk's office, because the clerk asked me to, about this issue. So, apparently, there might have been interest based upon the population. Class A are retail liquor stores. They're governed by state law, and they're limited by population. I gave you a little history of what our current ordinance says and what state law has said about it. So, I have two proposals that you have to, you may, may not, if you don't want to, as to how to increase the number from two to three, correct? Two to three. Because we have, we...
Three to four.
Three to four, I'm sorry, three to four. Because we have the population now that...
You want to increase it, okay.
Well, there was an interest, apparently, there was...
You said three to four.
I'm sorry, I'm tired.
It's not just the clerk. Clerk's received a couple of people looking for Class A liquor licenses, because there are...
I try to blame the clerk when I can.
I'll take the blame for this, because I also pushed you a little bit. But the, there have been a couple of applications for Class A liquor licenses. Our ordinance says we can only have three, because at the time, we only could have three based on population. State law says that once you get over a certain threshold, I believe it's 16,000 residents, which we're above, then you can have a fourth, and then it's basically four until you hit, like, 25,000 residents, so...
I'd like to make a motion to approve to four licenses based upon the new population.
Second.
We have to drop the ordinance. So, you got to choose between these two. So, one would automatically rise with the, with the, with the population, one would still just maximum at four, still give you control to come back. There's two options here. So, I don't know what option you're choosing.
So, option B is the one to reflect the town's intent to automatically increase the number available based on the population. Option A would be town council control to add a license in the future.
And the reason why it gets a little funky is because when you hit the 14,000 to 20,000, it gets a little, the law's not clear how you calculate it during that period, so...
So, which one were you, you were doing, this one, right?
Were you doing the first one or the second one?
B. Motion to increase to four if the population goes up.
Maximum.
Correct. Not maximum, if we go to 27,000 people, 10 years from now, we'll, you know, we'll...
We'd have to re-advertise versus, so, B is what you're describing, which would be to reflect the town's intent to automatically increase the number of available licenses based on the current census. So, if we tomorrow balloon from 17,000 residents to 30,000 residents, and we can have six, then there's two available ones that somebody can apply for.
Correct. I wasn't looking at the options, I was just looking at the main section G there.
All right. So, to clarify, you want us to go to RFP to advertise, not RFP, to...
Draft, draft a resolution.
Draft the ordinance, okay.
So, that's all that is, is to draft the ordinance?
Okay.
For GB.
All right. Motion's made in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay. Interim Town Administrator, discussion and possible vote to advertise an RFP to paint the interior of Town Hall offices and council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just so for the council's awareness, the next several items, these have already been pre-approved funding from gaming from previous years. This is just you authorizing me to work with the clerk, so we can put these projects to bed by going out to RFP, also recognizing that whatever bid comes in, it's going to come back to you to award the bid as well.
Mr. President, motion to approve as a lump, H-I-N-J, to allow the administrator to go out for an RFP for the interior Town Hall offices, paint, we placed windows in the town clerk's office, and replaced carpeting at Town Hall as already approved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. It's regarding item K, discussion impossible vote to authorize myself to sign a memorandum of understanding for the statewide public safety CAD, which is computer aided dispatch, and RMS, which is record management system. As part of your backup, the state has been on the same public safety records management and dispatch system for probably the past 27 years. There's been a couple iterations by the state to unify all the police departments, all the fire departments. It seems like the state is finally going in one direction with one vendor. This MOU would commit us to that program, which personally, given my role also as police chief, I don't think we have a choice. But it is important to bring to your attention, if you looked at the pricing scheme, right now, we'd be keeping the same amount of money that we currently allocate for our current CAD system. But in years 26 and 27, it would significantly increase. By significant, it would double. So it's something we do not have to worry about in this fiscal cycle, but it is definitely something that we will have to worry about in, in the coming years.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Do I have a motion from the council? All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded to authorize the town, the interim town administrator to sign the MOU for the statewide public safety CAD slash RMS. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? None opposed. Okay. Fire Chief Bailey has a discussion impossible vote to increase the ambulance billing rates. Fuck, Mr., Mr., I don't know why you're still here. We could have just done this without you.
Good evening. Just request of the town council authorization to increase our ambulance EMS billing rates as recommended by our billing company. The backup should have been provided.
It was. Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion from the council?
Motion to approve. Sorry, Denise.
No, I don't care.
All right. Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Just so the public's aware, this won't, this is still their insurance, not.
Correct.
Directed to them.
Mr. President, can we just clarify and make, make the motion to approve the increased billing rates as specified here?
Yep.
What's wrong? Running an awful lot of motion is so moved, but.
Also.
Just to clarify, it is, it is as requested by the fire chief.
In the packet.
In the packet. All right. So.
Before you make your vote, Mr. President, just, I'll ask the chief just for a bit of clarification and also to thank Mrs. Ferreira, his personal assistant, regarding the billing, because this is all done in-house. So Chief, if you would, just kind of walk the council through where we came from with the old billing company, where we are now and what you are projecting as far as funding coming in.
So we, last year, we went out with an RFP, early last year, to look at possibly potentially changing billing companies. And one company bid on that. We accepted that company. It was a different company. I'm going to let my assistant come up and talk about the projected revenues.
You're welcome.
Hello there. So we work with ComStar. We've had them for about a year. And our collections have been better than they've been in five years. Right now, we're projecting probably $900,000 this year and potentially a million.
What was an average year, Matt?
So as some of you know, I did it for a lot of years and my highest year was 550,000. 2019, they decided to go out to the previous company and they never even hit that. So they, I think the highest they did was probably 500,000, maybe a little bit more than that. But I believe we project our revenues at about 650,000. So they, we haven't hit it in a number of years. This year, we will hit it and surpass that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great work.
Thank you, Judy.
This is the president.
Ms., Ms., Counselor Perry.
I was just looking at the finances. I believe this year they budgeted for 650,000. The last financial statement we got, I believe they collected 428,000 so far this year. So.
That's a good thing. Could, could you just also clarify for me, just so I'm, so we understand it for the clerk's records, what rates, I have this sheet. It doesn't show that the rate, it says new effective rate is blank. So where, where do I find the new rates? Is it the second page?
Yes, there's a list of them.
Yep.
The 225 rate change form where it has the current rate and then the new rates are in the middle. And then Medicare was total.
No, this says Medicaid, current rates. Where's the new effective?
Yep.
This is what they recommend we go up to.
Second to last page.
Yeah, it's right there.
Okay, so it's this, it's this right here.
It's down here, isn't it?
No, it's the middle. It's the average bundled ComStar top 50 that you're changing it to.
Those are the rates we would like to.
Right. I'm just thinking, yeah, it was a little quick because it says new rate over here and it's blank. So it's the middle rate, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. It's this right here.
Yep. All right. Motion's made, seconded. Any further discussion? Counselor.
Yes, maybe it's time with, with this major increase that we start taking a percentage of the billing money and putting it into a restricted account to be buying our rescues.
Love it. And we will put that on the next agenda. Well, maybe not the next one, but the one afterwards because we've got the public hearing.
It's, it'll help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? In favor? Okay. None opposed. All right. Interim Town Administrator, discussion impossible vote to authorize interim town administrator to work with the town solicitor on policy for public safety details.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is just you authorizing me to work with the solicitor so we can unify the public safety details. As you know, the police details, we charge the FICA and I, I always love working with the solicitor. We charge the FICA, but we also charge an administrative fee. And the police department actually, and fortunately, thanks to the treasurer's office for kind of just setting it straight, the fire department was charging a different fee from the police department. But now we are both on the same page as far as the administrative fees. But also we have a significant amount of vendors who are not paid. And as you know, your firefighters and your police officers get paid out of a general fund and then we go after the vendor to reimburse that fund. There's a significant amount of money that is owed to the town from vendors who have not paid. So what I would like to do as part is just memorializing the actual fee and the administrative fee, but also charge vendors like you want on a credit card, interests for those who do not pay in 30, 60, and 90 days.
We talked about that before because this was a problem a few years ago.
And on top of that also, vendors who, you know, refuse to pay wouldn't be allowed to work details or have police or fire details in town. We'd also want to review the, the charges for using public safety equipment. Currently, we use the standard DOT rate. It's, I believe, 25 or $30 an hour to rent a police cruiser if it's on a detail. We're getting that money back. But from what I've done and the research that I've done, we're on the low side. So it's something that I want to do a comprehensive change, put it into policy, put it in front of you townwide for all the public safety details.
All right. So I'd like to, with that said, I'd like to entertain a motion to ask the administrator to work with the solicitor to update the policy. And, Mr. Administrator, when do you think you'll have that back for us by?
Um, oh, given the work that you've already given the solicitor, I'd like to have it back to you by March 1st.
Okay. By the first meeting in March.
You didn't even know about it, John.
I did not know anything about this.
Congrats, Mr. Marcelo.
This gets slipped out of your agenda without my knowledge.
So do I have a, do I have a motion? All right. Motion's been made. Any further discuss, or seconded? All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Okay. With that, we're going to do executive session in two bites as requested by Counselor DiMediare. So I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session. Interim Town Administrator, Rhode Island General Law, 42465A5, discussion impossible vote on the disposition of publicly held property in the Tiverton Industrial Park and Solicitor Marcelo, Rhode Island General Law, 42465A2, Tiverton Recreation LLC and Longplex LLC v. Tiverton, NC 2024, 417, litigation update. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Rule call?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Okay. And now I'd like to make a motion to go into closed executive session. Interim Town Administrator, Rhode Island General Law, 42465A5, discussion related to the acquisition or lease of real property for public purposes where in advance, public information would be detrimental to the interest of the public. And interim town administrator, Rhode Island General Law, 42465A2, collective bargaining update on DPW contracts. And interim town administrator, Rhode Island General Law, 42465A1, personnel job performance slash annual evaluation for executive assistant Mary Lou Sullivan. Notice given. And Solicitor Marcelo, Rhode Island General Law, 42465A2, Tiverton V. LAL Construction, Eagleville Road Realty LLC, NC 2013 0087, litigation update and settlement discussions slash presentation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Rule call?
Yes.
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 All right. We are now in closed executive session.